Get in there. There, Ken.
The time?
It's coming.
All right. Uh, this is, uh, we're gonna call to order a workshop for the city of Holiday Island, city council. This is a workshop on discussing a draft of Title V of Health and Sanitation, uh, proposed health and sanitation ordinances. Let's start out by, um, we don't have the Pledge of Allegiance on the agenda, but we're gonna do it anyway.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wes went over to run copies of stuff, um, for himself, so he'll be back. I guess I can call the attendants. Councilman Dumas?
Here.
Councilman Graves?
Here.
Councilman Mills?
Here.
Councilman Pittman?
Here.
Councilman?
Elwood.
Elwood?
Here.
I would've thought of it. Uh, the, uh, entire council is present for the workshop. Um, I'm gonna, let me start out by just setting the stage for the workshop here. Uh, the objective of the workshop is to gather information. No action will be taken, uh, and any draft as presented does not imply approval or concurrence of the city council. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that what we're gonna be discussing today is just for discussion purposes only. Any action that'll be taken will be taken in our actual council meeting at some future date. We're here to gather information and try to put together the best health and sanitation ordinances we can. With that said, um, the, uh, the elephant in the room in the, uh, in Title V is trash collection. Uh, people have pretty strong opinions about trash collection. We have had, um, historically, it's been up to the property owners and residents to find a trash collection service. There are, I believe, four at the present time that operate in Holiday Island. And, um, and of course, for, you know, for, um, law-abiding citizens, that has worked out quite well. Problem is, not everybody's a law-abiding citizen. So, um, I just wrote down a couple of, you know, objectives that, that I have as mayor of what we want, what I wanna see in the, uh, in the sanitation portion of the health and sanitation, uh, ordinance. And, uh, first and foremost, we need to comply with the law. Secondly, we need to eliminate illegal dumping and trash burning in Holiday Island, which is a growing problem. We need to minimize wear and tear on the roads, and we need to provide a mechanism for illegal dump site cleanup if there is a, uh, if there is a problem. A secondary, um, objective would be to minimize the number of days a week that trash collection containers are sitting at the end of the streets or at the ends of the driveways. Uh, other people may have other goals and objectives, but those are the ones that, um, I had in mind when taking a look at the draft of, uh, of the ordinance. So, um, with that in mind, you know, as far as complying with the law, uh, I guess I would, I could re- review two different sections of code that I'm primarily, you know, concerned with. One is Arkansas Code Annotated eight dash six dash two zero two, which is, uh, uh, which states it is the purpose of this subchapter, and it's, and it is declared to be a policy of this state to regulate the collection and disposal of solid waste in a manner that will protect the public health and welfare, prevent water and air pollution, prevent and spread, the spread of disease and the creation of nuisances, conserve natural resources, and enhance the beauty and quality of the environment. So those are the stated objectives of the state of Arkansas relative to, um, solid waste disposal, collection and disposal. There's a whole section of code relative to this covering the responsibilities of local municipalities, counties, and the, and the state. Um, federal regulations, environmental regulations. You, you know, you could spend a week just collecting, um, information on all of the codes that apply when it comes to solid waste collection and disposal. But the one that, you know, specifically impacts cities is eight dash six dash two eleven, which is municipal solid waste management systems. I'll just read section A again of a lengthy, uh, section of code. "All municipalities shall provide a solid waste management system which will adequately provide for the collection and disposal of all solid waste generated or exist- existing within the incorporated limits of the municipality or in the area to be served and, and in accordance with the rules and orders of the Arkansas Pollution Control and Ecology Commission. The governing body of the municipality may enter into agreements with one or more municipalities, counties, or regional solid waste management districts, private persons or trusts, or with any combination thereof, to provide a solid waste management system or any part of a system for the municipality, but the agreement shall not relieve the parties of the responsibility under this subchapter." So in a nutshell, what that says is that, um, as a city, we could keep, continue to do what we're doing. We could continue to let four, um, companies, um, operate in Holiday Island, but in the final analysis, we are responsible for what they do. Just because we allow them to operate doesn't mean that we can shift the responsibility for what they do and how they operate to them. Uh, so one of the concerns that, you know, we would have as a city is, um, what kind of resources do we have to follow up behind the people? You know, anybody that's operating in the city to make sure that they're complying with a stack of, you know, environmental regulations this, this high? We have no expertise in. So, um, so that's, that's kind of where, where my thinking is when we, uh, when I approached, um, drafting this ordinance. Um, first up on the agenda is, uh, I said, I listed it as a question and answer with George Volbreit from Carroll County Solid Waste. So, George?
Yeah.
Um, why don't you come up? I think you could sit by the table there and...
Okay, I would, uh, I would like to bring Gary in April with me.
Okay.
The reason, uh, I want to bring him in with me.
Bigger target?
Yeah.
More targets?
More targets, but no, uh, I am, uh, George Volbreit, Director of Carroll County Solid Waste District. Carroll County Solid Waste, uh, this is Gary Gray, uh, Director of District Operations in April Shaw. Also, in a, in a sense, she is a Director of the County Co., she's over in the finance and administration part of the family. Uh, together, the three of us, uh, are the top heads, the top two of Carroll County Solid Waste. Carroll County Solid Waste became a district in July of twenty twenty.
Just hang on one second, George. Is, uh, can, is that, is the mic beginning or is that off?
BK, can you hear the speaker? Yes.
Okay.
All right.
In July of twenty twenty, we became, ADQ permitted us to become a district. And you don't, they just don't allow anybody. We became the nineteenth district in Arkansas, a single county district consisting only of Carroll County. ADQ just don't allow anyone to become a district. You've got to, uh, qualify, in a sense, to become that district. Uh, we qualified by doing that, uh, for promoting recycling. We actually recycle, and Gary can tell you what we bring to our recycling center in our processing center and, and a year. We recycle the more than the city of, uh, Little Rock does. We promote recycling. We've got an educational, uh, trailer that we use to go around to the schools and, and whoever wants to, wants us to accommodate them with this. But we're, what's good about us becoming a district is we, we care about Carroll County. We want to provide the best service for Carroll County that we, that we can. Uh, we want to take care of the, the refuse and the recycling needs of the citizens of Carroll County. Then you wanted me to talk a little bit about, uh, the benefits of a, of a single hauler in a, in a community. There are a lot of benefits to having just a single hauler in the community. As far as Carroll County Solid Waste District, uh, the, the community, uh, of Holiday Island is within our, our district. Mayor Dan actually sits on our board, uh, Carroll County Solid Waste District's board as a board member, or a voting board member.
So in a sense, he has control of what we do?
Yes, and, and, and that's why I'm saying that. In a sense, Dan has a, a vote and, and controlling on, on what we do. The...
Let, let me, uh, you know, just as a matter of full disclosure, I probably should've said that going in, that I do sit on the board of Carroll, Carroll County Solid Waste, uh, and I am a voting member on that board. However, I will not have a vote when it comes to passing the ordinance that we're discussing here. So, um, I don't feel like I have that conflict of interest. Uh, it's up to the, it's up to the city council to pass the ordinance.
Aren't you on that board by virtue of being the mayor of the city and not for any other reason?
Um, not necessarily.
Okay.
And George can explain this, but the, 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 the district was formed by the three, um, uh, Class One cities in, um, in the county. And then in addition to that, uh, because they also serve the large rural area, they had more or less ad lard members on the board that represented rural areas. Holiday Island, um, had a representative on that board, but the representative represented Holiday Island as a rural, as part of the rural area, not part of the city. When we incorporated, it just, um, Doug Taylor was the representative for Holiday Island. He and I discussed it, and he thought that it would be better for, um, for me as the mayor to be on that board. Um, however, I believe that Doug ended up remaining on the board as an ad lard rural member anyway.
Yes.
So he and I both now are, are on the board. But, um, yeah, the, the, uh, I offered to, you know, to sit on the board, and they accepted me.
There are, uh, as I was saying, there's many benefits to having a single hauler in your community. Less traffic from a trash truck on, on the roads. Uh, right now, I believe, uh, I believe three days a week here in Holiday Island, you guys have us, and you'll have Ace one day, and you'll have, uh, uh, maybe, uh, Waste Management Republic, uh, one day, and maybe O-S-A-J, maybe some more haulers. But the, with a single hauler, and Holiday Island is more than likely gonna need to be, uh, from the studies that I've done, set up on two different days because of the vast majority of it, because we've got, we've got the rest of the counties that we do too. But, uh, Carroll County Solid Waste uses single axle trucks. Now, there's a single axle truck versus a, a twin axle truck in, in the rear of the truck. There's benefits to both of those sides, but on chip and seal highways, the single axle is better. Uh, when you turn a double axle truck, it seems to roll the chip and seal, uh, and the single axle does not. But the single axle will, uh, seem to groove the pavement more because it's a single axle and there's more weight on that axle. But what Holiday Island, or Carroll County Solid Waste does is we use smaller trucks, what we call pack rack trucks, they're, uh, smaller, like a U-Haul type truck, that we run down a lot of the roads, and we try to keep our big trucks on the main roads, uh, and use these smaller trucks for a satellite truck, uh, to keep them off the smaller roads and from turning around in the cul-de-sacs. Yes, sir.
So, so right now, you're on the roads three days a week?
No, right now, we're on your roads one day a week.
Okay, and you're gonna go to...
We have approximately nine hundred customers in the county, in the Holiday Island area. Uh, but we, we have customers, we run routes every day of the week. It will, the vast, uh, Dan is at around fourteen hundred, someone, uh, now that you've become a city, fifteen hundred? Uh, I'm running right now on one day a week to pick up the nine hundred customers. I'm running, and this is not counting my recycling trucks, but my recycling trucks are pickups and smaller trucks. I'm running three, uh, three, four trash trucks on Wednesday out here. Three big trucks and a, a, uh, pack rack truck to do it on Wednesday. To add the other, eh, to add the other Holiday Island residents to that, I would need to, I would need to, uh, bring in, incorporate another day in that. Now, with me incorporating another day, though, I would run portions of the town the one day and portions the other day. We wouldn't be running back over, uh, the, uh, same portion, the same area.
And it wouldn't take, you, you said you had nine hundred customers here?
We have approximately nine hundred.
So, you know, you, it, it wouldn't take, you know, it wouldn't take a third again as much time to pick up the rest of them, uh, or forty percent more time to pick up the rest of them because you're driving right past houses that, you know?
That is correct, yes.
You could just stop.
We're, we're passing a lot of these houses now, yes.
Driving past houses.
Yeah, but those, uh, big trucks that Waste Management has?
Yes.
Uh, they chip and seal, I rode one year, and, and within a year, it was down. I mean, it just, I had, there were two, two people on the road to use them, and they did. So they chip and seal.
They seem to do a lot more damage than the thing like this.
And that's the, you know, that's just it. You, with multiple haulers, you know, you may have some, you may have somebody on the road that's got us, and then they may have Waste Management down at the end, where that Waste Management truck's gonna have to run that whole road to get down to their customers.
The, uh, yeah, the, the type of truck that, I think, has a bearing on it, but I think more than anything, it's the fact that you have four haulers. Let's assume that each one of them has twenty-five percent of the business, that, you know, there's four trucks going past these houses every, you know, at, at least once a week. And, uh...
Those are great big.
Yeah, picking up on one and then driving past three, picking up one, driving past three, and, you know, it, it's, it's in reality, it's four times the wear and tear on the roads than what you'd have if you had one hauler.
You're, uh, you're gonna be able to do the island in two days? Is that the plan? Is that what would be the plan?
Yes.
Different parts of the island?
Uh, well, right, yeah, the island, as far as the island itself?
Oh, I mean, Holiday Island, not, not just...
Okay, yes, I, yes, with, uh, if there's around fourteen, fifteen hundred, uh, yes, in, in two days.
What about the commercial?
The commercial would be in with that. We, we would, uh, it would be in on that day.
I, I'm sure you're gonna touch, I don't wanna stew your thunder if you're gonna touch on this, but my background, I, in the past, have had to handle, uh, the liability of one of our insurers in a superfund site, and I know that that type of situation is jointed several. So can you kind of touch on why you would, it would be safer to go with you than some plain people, we don't know where their trash is going?
We're, we're, like I said, we're a district and we're ADQ licensed. You know, we have a, a transfer station's license. We, we're environmental officers. We're licensed under ADQ, me and George, as environmental officers. So, I mean, we follow every strict rule and...
I, I know, that's kind of not my point. My point is, is, is you can find out, if you're a small business owner, uh, you could put a battery and have somebody haul it off, and it gets into superfund site, and you're joint severed liable for the whole thing. Doesn't matter that you didn't do it. That's, that's the area that I wanted you to kind of...
Is it okay?
Yes.
Okay. I think what you're asking is the liability for Holiday Island.
I, I know the answer, I want you to...
Yes, okay. I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding. Okay, we are insured, okay? But we pick up transfer station, we have inspectors, uh, we take it to a permitted landfill that's in Tunny Town that is, you know, it, it's inspected quarterly. As, and we have to, part of our permitting at the transfer is we have to have a Class C operator onsite at all times, that the transfer is...
That inspects levels.
Which means they have to verify what's being dumped, okay? If there's a battery that gets in there or a tire that is in that trash, that Class C operator has to make sure that that is removed and not hauled. Now, as far as the liability, I believe that if I'm not mistaken, once we, or the solid waste hauler picks up the trash, that does become ours.
You are not mistaken, yes, it, it's...
So you're, you're in longer...
I'm thinking about it on the other direction. I don't know if everybody realizes that if they do not use a service like yours and it gets into the wrong place, they're responsible even though they had nothing to do with where it went or how it got there, it didn't have any.
There's il- there's illegal dumps that are cleaned up, and they find names in there, and like you said, they're...
That's exactly what I'm getting at.
They can find my name in an illegal dump, and I'm responsible. I paid whoever to haul my stuff up. Well, the dump's your problem now.
Yeah, we have run it.
You know, we've rented stuff like that.
I have too, I have.
They, they had, they actually contracted with somebody else, and we found, we were told about an illegal dump, but we went to check it. It had their name and stuff in it, and they said, well, we contracted with them. We did not penalize or neglect them. All we can mostly do is excise cautious.
But under ADQ rules, under Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, it is the person's responsibility, not the, you know?
The story I had, it just, it, as an aside, I had a small gas station in Shurrie, Georgia, whose service went on strike, and they hired somebody else for about three days to haul off some stuff. It ended up in a superfund site, and I'm going to mediation, uh, and I'm thinking, well, we've got a small part of this, our attorney said, well, no, this is joint severed liability. You owe the same amount that Exxon does.
Yep, yes.
Holy crap, you know? But I, and from our standpoint...
Yes.
That alleviates our liability, but also...
Yes.
Other citizens of Holiday Island, and that's, I'm not sure everybody understands.
And we're, and we're a district. We're held to a lot higher standard than just a trash company, you know?
Yes, but now, so we license any small hauler in our district. We license. They got to go through us to get their license, and, and, and they've got to follow ADQ regulations and all that too, but we will, uh, you know, we, if, if they break the law or do anything wrong, we pull their license. Uh, as a district, they're licensed to us. And, and we will, we make them hold up to that standard. Not saying they're not gonna do that, but it would be, it would be us, uh, because we are environmental officers, uh, licensed to ADQ, uh, to investigate, uh, any wrongdoing and, uh, and to follow up, write tickets, see and take the district court. Does that, does that answer your question?
No, I...
Nobody knew the question, answer, I just wanted to...
Do, do all of the haulers, you know, you said that, that anybody that wants to pick up trash in Carroll County, including Holiday Island, they have to come to you to license?
Yes.
Yes, they have to be permitted through ADQ, and we license them to our district.
But they're not required to bring the trash they pick up to your transfer station, right? Correct?
Uh, but they do have to record it quarterly...
Yes.
And pay the tipping fees, whether they take it out of state or out of district.
Right.
Not required, no. Uh, as a district, as the director of a district, anything in Carroll County, I can force them to bring to our transfer station. I, I don't. So they are not, not required, no, but there is a provision in there where, yes, I can, if I say you gotta take what you pick up in Carroll County, my transfer station, uh, I can...
That, that's my concern, is that, uh, that, um, we don't have to worry about the people that follow the law. We have to worry about the people that don't.
Yes.
And, uh...
Yeah, but let me tell you something, that's hard.
And, you know, the, our, the statute clearly says that the city is ultimately responsible. And, uh, so, um, if, if somebody, and I'm not, I'm not saying that anybody that's doing this today, I'm not saying that anybody is doing this today. I'm just saying that somebody, you know, it, somebody, the potential, if there, there is a potent, potential today that somebody would start up a business, a trash collection business. They'd go to you, they'd get their license and everything else. They'd start picking up trash, but they'd, they would opt not to take it to your transfer station, but they would take it someplace else and dump it, and then all of a sudden, you know, ten years down the road, we find out that there's a illegal trash dump somewhere, maybe a superfund site that needs to be cleaned up. Who's responsible? The city of Holiday Island, because we allowed it to happen. And, you know, and I'm, I'm, you know, saying that we're not gonna have the resources to be able to follow up behind several companies to make sure they're complying with the law. That's, that's my main concern with having multiple carriers.
But it...
I have had experience with that, not as a, not as a elected official or anything, but when we lived in Missouri, we lived up in a subdivision out in the county, and, uh, there was a, uh, there were two, um, trash haulers that, that serviced our subdivision. Um, one of them was legitimate, the other one was not so much. And he would, he would pick up trash, and he'd take it back to his place out in the country. He'd dump it all out on the ground and then start sorting through it to see if there was anything in there that he could sell for scrap iron or, you know, make a little extra money off of, and the rest of it just laid there. And it became a big, open, you know, garbage dump.
We have one of those on Holiday Island right now. Um, I am sure, and I can give you the address. And it's Dogwood Lane, number one.
Yes.
And...
I issued a citation yesterday.
You did?
Yes.
I'm telling you right now, I have...
It was bad.
Well, it's not just bad, we live next door, right?
Okay.
Um, and it's not even just a matter of the trash. They have three dogs running loose off of these... Um, and it's not even just a matter of the trash, they have free dogs running loose, a puppy, his family Great Dane running loose. They have a back porch where the Great Dane just poops out there, it's covered in stool.
Yeah, I have photos of all those.
I have sat out on my back porch to have a cup of coffee in the morning and looked over and seen a gentleman on the top of the deck taking a shit off the back of the deck. Um, you know, so if you wanna talk about the trash, we have it in Holiday Islands.
I know about that.
That is that dump right there.
Yeah.
Well, uh, that is.
There's two different, there's two different issues, there's people, you know, property owners or residents illegally dumping in their own.
Yes.
Yard or in the neighbor's yard, uh, and then there's, you know, uh, commercial haulers that we would have to police to make sure.
If it's the same amount, it doesn't matter, I mean, there's enough out there.
Anything to do with solid waste, we are authorized to issue.
And as a district, me and Gary take this seriously, uh, Mayor Dan told us about this, and, and we, the two addresses we took care of yesterday.
So what's the process after you?
Um, I issued, I issued them a citation to space, uh, they, uh, said they will comply, I gave them thirty days, if they do not comply, uh, contact the prosecuting attorney and we go to court. And, uh, believe it or not, we've never had one go to court. I mean, cause the fines are, they're, when A D E Q gets involved, they're insane, I mean, they're not little.
Ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, they're not little few hundred dollar fines.
I haven't seen anything like this on Holiday Island, it's the worst ever.
We've, we visited yesterday, and I mean, yes, we've, we issued a citation, and they said they'll comply, we'll see.
Yeah.
But if not, we can take, we can take it to court.
If they don't comply, we will.
And our sheriff and our prosecutors seem to be on board with us, I mean, it's, it seems like it's working.
And I know this is off the subject, but what do we do about free running dogs?
That's, that's, uh, that's another workshop.
Been a lot of code.
Yeah.
I have a question, what, uh, what legal authority do you have over a Missouri collection service that would be collecting in Holiday Island?
They have to, if they're collected in Carroll County.
Two of us on what they pick up in Carroll County, if they're coming in Carroll County and picking up trash, say Ace.
I don't know the name.
Mora also, they are licensed in Carroll County, or they can't come in Carroll County where they want.
Okay. So if they do something wrong, do you have?
If they're wrong, it's a district, yes.
Hold it down, this is a recorded workshop, so if, if there's background chat or the mic won't pick up the people that need to be recorded.
So if they do something wrong, what legal authority do you have as a district over them if their business is in Missouri?
We can keep them from collecting in Carroll County.
We can, yeah, that's basically about the only thing we can do, we can keep them collecting now.
There are fines.
Okay.
They are fines, uh.
Because they made agreements with you to operate under certain terms and conditions, is why you've been buying them?
You know, the Missouri borders Carroll County.
Right.
We're not gonna keep Carroll County beautiful unless we can keep the surrounding area also, so, you know, we're concerned. And I don't, you know, I'm not here to talk trash about any other trash haulers or anything, but, uh, Ace, when Ace was caught burning and, and dumping up there and burning on his place, you know, we got Missouri A D E Q involved, and, uh, and they took care of it, uh, the Missouri D E Q involved.
What about?
So we are concerned about what happens outside, and the haulers that come into Carroll County too. But as far as licensing, we can only restrict what they do in Carroll.
What can you do as an agency or a district to help us with the Missouri side of the border and dumping that appears to be illegal to me? What can you do about that for us?
It's a different agency, uh, it's Mora, we have A D E Q in Arkansas, in Missouri we have Mora, and, uh, I really don't know. Uh, we haven't dealt a whole lot with them, have we?
The Ace was the only one that I.
Can you work with Missouri to resolve the issue?
Yes, they would work with us, they did in that case, they worked with us, uh, they resolved it, uh.
Missouri has different laws than us too, I mean, it's kind of. I live up, uh, Blue Eye area, and right across the border in Missouri, their fire chief says pile your stuff up there and burn it, it's no big deal. In Arkansas, it's illegal, you know, so I mean, Missouri is, they do have different rules than us, you know?
Yes, sir. Um, I guess probably ten or fifteen years ago, when you guys first started servicing Holiday Island, um, we were trying, and we're here, uh, we were in the process of trying to make it mandatory. And one of the big issues that we're gonna have in trying to do that is part-time people.
Oh, okay.
How do you, how do you deal with, you know, we, I've got three people on my street that are part-time residents.
April, uh, why don't you stand up and help us out on this?
I mean.
But basically, uh, if we're in as a single hauler though, uh, you know, you guys are going, you guys are going to want, uh, it depends on what Holiday Island wants.
That's what I was gonna say, it's kind of to what y'all want.
It's how you want your, how you want your contract set up.
Eureka Springs, they're required to, it doesn't matter vacation, if you're a resident there, you're required to have trash service. But I mean, it depends on what y'all want, really.
April, you want that kind of.
Do you have other plans, is what I think he's getting at, I also have somebody on my neighbor that's probably there five weekends a year. It's a little harsh to make them pay, pay the same monthly fee that I do, their trash picked up every week.
I mean, this, this, this is gonna be a.
Yes, you're absolutely correct, I do bill it. Um, I know we have a rich part from West County, over there around the lake, Holiday Island, a lot of them are, this is their second home.
Right.
So when it's nice weather, they'll be down here for approximately a month, two months. Bottom line, it is what you have.
It really, it really is.
What can you do, give us some options, so you can.
Okay, what you can do is, you can do like a two bag service, call us when you're here, we'll open it back up, charge you, call us when you leave, and we close it.
But it depends on what y'all want.
That's one way, second way, we can do a minimal monthly charge, whether you're here or not.
Yes.
That would be the standard.
Uh, the, the part-timers used to be one of the bigger offenders, because, you know, they show up a weekend now, and a weekend three months from now, and they got all, they generate all this trash, and they got a whole place to put it, so they, they figure out where to put it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I had a place over in northeast Arkansas, it was sort of the same way, and they, and I know y'all wondered, they put it in our assessment, they charged us six months for them there or not. Because I explained to my work with the trash company, and we disconnect and all that, like now you have to pay six months, so it's really whatever y'all, whatever y'all.
So you, um.
What they did, I, I visited a few weekends in the summer, they charged me six months service, I could put it out when I was there, so it's really whatever y'all want.
You have, you have, um, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use a, a reference again, when we lived in Ridge again, um, all, you, you, you bought, um, you bought bags from the city. The bags had specific markings on them for, for garbage. You could generate as much garbage as you wanted to, as long as you were willing to keep buying bags.
True.
But you couldn't put anything out on the curb that wasn't in a city bag.
True.
And, uh, you know, for, so for part-timers, you know, they could just buy bags.
Yeah, we have bags.
And when they're here, they use up one of their bags, and when they need more, they, they get more.
That will work for fifty percent or sixty percent of the people, the other ones are gonna say, hang on.
Well, we, we issue, we issue fines, if you, how, how do you go and fine if you don't?
You can charge a minimal service though, and when they're here, we'll pick it up, you know, I mean, it's really what's.
Yeah, it, I mean, city.
I, I don't think the bag thing will work.
Did you charge them the bags?
The bag thing also, what's keeping people from other cities, getting over the bags and setting them out, I mean.
Well, I know.
The bag thing.
Well, I'll tell you what they do, I had, I had a condo here, it was a part-time home for two years, it was permanent. And we, we had trash service, and there were, uh, there weren't months, but there were several weeks in between us being here, and, uh, if, if we left it out for, for the collection day here, we had one of the neighbors take it back behind.
Mm-hmm.
And, and when we came back two weeks later or whatever, it would be full.
Yeah.
It would be full of people from other condos.
Yes, illegal dumping is a serious issue.
And the thing about the bags, to her point, if, if you leave trash bags for anyone to tie.
Dogs.
Uh, 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 this, I've, I've never seen someone dog.
Well, they, they supply the dogs and the trash hole and went on, you know, I mean, it's a no institution there, so.
When you come to get the trash, take the dog too.
Yeah, please, would you, please?
See, if they're, if they're required, if they're required to have the service, you know, maybe, maybe a minimum fee.
I think the minimum fee.
A minimum fee, and then when they're here, they call us, and we pick up their stuff, I mean.
I know there are, I wanna, where, where maybe.
Yeah, a lot of, and, and B and Bs now too.
Yeah, from Tulsa, that, over in West County around the lake, that's their, like, second home. And it, several years ago, when we first started building it, because it became an issue, we charged them like five dollars a month.
All I know is, when I was on the B L C, we were trying to put it mandatory, and that's the pushback we got.
Yeah.
See, you got, you got your weakens, and it's kind of a little unfair, they pay regardless, don't they? If they have water, they have to have trash, it don't matter if you're there, it don't matter if you're putting out.
Do you, how do you, well, it's probably on a volunteer basis, out on, uh, Beaver Lake, because they got a lot of part-time people.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it's, it's.
Yeah, y'all making man stories a little different.
It depends on, you know, most of it is, just tell us when you're here, I'll reopen it, your charge based on how long you're here, and then you close it, dude. So we get a lot of phone calls.
And then maybe, maybe they pay minimal during the.
So this, so we get into this, you're gonna give us the options then?
It's totally up to how.
Yeah, they're, they're separate, separate from the, you know, the, the contract, whatever, whatever contract we end up with, with, with whatever carriers.
We have contracts with four cities.
Won't be part of the order.
They are.
Uh, you know, the O eighty twenty are probably better than that, it'll probably be ninety ten or ninety five five, but, you know, the majority of people will do what's right, and, and you got.
Oh, always, oh, I think that's why you have to have some sort of minimum for each water meter.
I, I, I like that idea.
But, but it should be fairly low to allow those really part-time, that part-time.
You know, I got, yeah, I got people.
To get the trash collected, but also.
And we can do, it's, it's, whatever rule y'all make, so, if they're paying that minimal, we don't pick them up till they come, it's whatever y'all decide, I mean.
Or you just pick it up when it's out there, well.
Then, then, then you got someone that pays minimal, and they're sitting out every week, we wouldn't know.
Yeah, because you got a neighbor that was sitting out there, or someone coming out of town.
And, you know, and people bought the house down the road from us, from Lake Charles, and I guess they're there about five or six times a year.
What about bulk pickup? Once a year, once a year.
Well, now that's on my spring, and I, I wanted to let you guys know, uh, while I was in here, our spring bulky cleanup that we do for free, I'd like to do that first Saturday, if you guys will approve that, of May this year. Is when I'd like to schedule that.
And that's for all of our.
Uh, but that, now, let's say bulky pickup, uh, through the year though, uh, if you don't wanna wait for that, and you've got something like a couch that wants you out, you call the office, we make a work order.
We charge them.
And we charge them, and, and our driver picks up, you know, it's a work order.
So that, that service is available now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's when I wanted to go now.
Yes, to all of our customers.
If, if, if they're our customer now, and they call and say, hey, I got a couch out there, we'll grab it.
Yeah.
You know, if they, if they don't call and just sit at the curb, we, you know, I mean, call, call them, tell them we'll pick it up.
We try to, but it depends on what the item is, and if there's two, two people, because I'm, I, I'm not comfortable doing work orders for just the driver to pick up a full-size couch, that's dangerous to me.
I read down through there someplace, and, and, you know, the bulk pickup, applicable residences that are allowed to curbside bulky collection for you, to pick up apartment complexes, other multifamily housing units, it's just, are not eligible. Uh, that, you know, we've got some apartments, and we've got townhouses, you know.
We have a, we have a transfer station variable, they can take it to any time, but, but, we usually go to departments, and the reason is, I mean.
I know, but each one of them has a water meter, so they already, right?
Yeah.
Each one, each apartment, each townhouse condo, got a water meter, so they're paying. So why, I don't see how you can exclude them from the.
That would be individual, because they.
They pick up their dumpster every, every, every week, I mean, I, I, what do we get, um, what's up to?
About bulky items, the bulky cleanups at apartments and townhouses and stuff, Holiday Island has, I mean, you look at the door and see that.
We got eight places, four places.
I hear, we did.
No, it's, it's just like, it's just like when we do green floors, clean, bring him, at the commercial places, we don't pick up, we don't pick up the stuff. You know, they're, they're running a business, that's part of their business.
Yeah. The townhouse associations, you know, the people pay a monthly fee, and, and that trash collection is included in it, so I, I don't know.
Because there's a limit, limit of an amount, you know, like they're paying for a dumpster, we pick up that dumpster every week, but you know, the way, the way I see it, it may be wrong, like, we do the cleanups and green floors and everywhere else, the apartments we skip, because if we didn't, there'd be a pile out there bigger than our truck, and everything people collected during the.
I, I don't know, I, I see that.
It's part of their business, it's part of their business, it's kinda.
I, I see that as a pushback that we're gonna probably get, you know, from, uh.
What, did you, uh, when you do your, uh, spring and fall, or whatever you're gonna do this year, that you wouldn't pick up at apartments?
We, we haven't, no, that, we haven't in the past.
I think this is something we'd probably be talking about.
Why are they being pushed back now, is there pushback?
We haven't picked up from businesses in the past.
We say if it's commercial, and I, and apartments and stuff are commercial, you know, if somebody leaves and leaves all their couches and all their furniture and stuff, that's just part of their, that's an expense they're gonna affect the business.
Deny me if I pay.
We will pick it up, you know, like, if they, if they, if they sit it out there at the dumpster, and call and say, hey, a resident moved out, they left a bunch of stuff, we'll pick it up and charge them.
As a renter, all right, in an apartment building, how can you say?
Well, do you distinguish condos and townhouses or contract buildings?
Okay, yeah, oh, right.
No, well, now, a condo, or a, or a townhouse, or a.
I think these condo associations.
That's really just.
Say that again?
A duplex or something like that, that's really just two different things, uh, that's not a, a business. And now, I, as operations manager, when we come out here to haul down, we got everything unless it was like a business store.
Yeah.
Uh, the church.
Uh, a church, everything else, I mean, all these apartments and duplexes, we did. If they was our customer.
If they were our customer.
Uh, but what we didn't do was like a gas station, a, uh, a hotel, a, a business.
And you know, and I ain't saying nobody in Holiday Island wanna do it, but if you offer that to them, that save up their trash for the whole year until we have our cleanup, and there'll be something out there the size of two trash trucks, we just picked everything.
Well, or if you do a hotel or something, you know, they will, I think they might be wanting to change.
Cause they don't wanna take your head out of it, you know?
And the cleanup actually cost us, the yearly cleanups we do for free cost us twenty thousand dollars, is what it costs.
That's what we spent last year on cleanups, twenty, twenty thousand.
One of the things I, I think about is we've got a lot of elderly people out there, including many of us.
Thank you.
And, and, uh, that, that are not capable of moving the stuff out of their house or out of their yard, or in to the street even. And, uh, I know some, depending upon Ace, because Ace, they would call Ace, they would actually come up to the garage, pick something up, take it to their truck when they wanted it hauled off, and that was one of the things they really liked about Ace.
Yeah.
We do elderly handicapping, yeah.
But we will not go on your resident and get sensitive.
Yeah, we will. But if you got it on the outside of the residence, yeah, we already have.
To the garage.
Yeah, we can, we can, you say, hey, as far as I can get to my garage door, we'll grab it, you know, I mean.
Cause I was thinking, if you didn't offer that, they're gonna pop, hire some guy down the street with a truck, come get it, and don't tell them where that's gonna end up.
Now, we do that for the cities.
Yeah, we can follow these up.
We do that for the county.
One, one other question, uh, part of things with a lot of people, um, and I, I've had Carroll County ways for fifteen years, I guess. Whenever they, we finally talked to you guys, uh, what is, what is Richard's name?
Roger.
Roger Minor.
Well, who was the first director?
The first, oh, uh, Brian, Brian, Brian Yucena, and then it was Roger Minor.
We never came out here till Roger Minor.
Okay, well, anyway, the guy I was dealing with is one who's a state representative, and he.
Phil Jackson.
Phil Jackson, okay, now you got.
That's the third one.
Okay, I, I dealt with Phil Jackson, what, that, um. Um, you know, he wasn't going to take on Holiday Island unless it was, uh, universal or whatever you, you know, we had to have it, you know. Uh, you know, everybody. And, and, but talking into tape, and now you say you have nine hundred, so you got to put on, uh.
We're actually growing, as a percentage wise, we're growing more in Holiday Island than we are anywhere else in.
Well, I think most of the new people that are moving in, you know, go with you guys. Um, and, but my, what I, the original question is, I, I've got a, I think, now, uh. What percentage when we go to the, what's the term I want, universal?
Exclusive Holiday.
Exclu-, there you go, exclusive contract with you, what kind of redu- reduction in, in rates are we gonna see?
Well, we looked at, at rates right now, uh, when we first started coming out here, our. Phil had the rates set and when we gained a certain amount of customer, Phil actually lowered the rates, uh, as director. Uh, not a big sen- percentage, but he lowered them because we were getting more customers and it was costing us less to come out here.
Right, he's making more stops.
Now, as a, uh, we, we had you guys right now at a pretty good rate. Now, if we get it exclusive with all the customers, that will lower. I'm not, I've got to sit down and do some figuring, uh, you know, to see what that would be.
Okay.
Uh, but yes, it, it would, uh, as an exclusive contract, you guys sign in a contract with us, it, it will lower.
Uh, I've got a question about recycling. Uh, of the nine hundred customers, now how many are, are taking advantage of recycling?
Not a clue, but we offer it to everyone.
In Holiday Island, most of, most of them.
We, yeah, we, we offer it to every one of them, uh, but I really don't know how many participate. I know it's a big rap.
In Holiday Island, it's a big percentage.
Y'all, y'all do more than, the truck that comes out here brings more to our recycling center than Eureka or Beryl.
I'm gonna say ninety, ninety plus percent.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
Are people in Holiday Island recycled for it?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to push along here, I have to go to work. Um, first of all, what is the policy on dogs as it stands right now?
We have no policy.
Wow, okay.
Because we haven't gotten to animal control yet and, and created.
Well, I didn't know if we had a previous order that's in place or not.
No.
Okay, that is a big problem here, everywhere.
Well, you got to, you got to.
My other question is.
Something in their covenants.
How long does this process take as far as my neighbors and their trash? How long, approximately, how long will that process take?
They have thirty days.
They have thirty days to clean it up and then after that, we turn it over to the prosecuting attorney and, I don't know.
Okay.
Hopefully, hopefully they comply.
Okay.
So far, mu- so far, everybody we've messed with complies, you know, and some of them say, and I know it's your neighbor, but some of them. Some of them, they'll start cleaning up, say, I couldn't get it in those thirty days, we'll give them thirty more. I mean, we, we would rather them comply than give them a ten thousand dollar fine.
We've got to see action, we've got to see them clean before we will give them more.
You know, and once it goes to prosecuting attorney, I don't know.
I really feel this case in thirty days, it will be cleaned up and.
I disagree with you there, no, that's okay.
Yeah, okay, well, I don't know him, just too much talking to him.
I, I look more at his, um, by the time you prosecute part, they will have disappeared and it will be left that way, is my theory.
And then, then we can issue a citation to the property owner. The bad thing is most of the property owners we issue them to out here live in some other state.
They do. She lives in Oklahoma, I believe.
And. I mean, it's hard, Holiday Island's a little hard, cause I really, most of them that we've done in this area, they live in another state.
Yeah.
The only thing is.
If you, if you Google the, uh, you know, street view of the address of the property owner of that property, it's the front, it's, it's a bank.
Really?
So I don't know if the property is.
Probably in default.
Yeah.
In foreclosure or, or what.
And again, and we can't, we cannot do a thing about what somebody's property request. All we can do is household trash.
Yeah.
I mean, they can do whatever, that's not.
As far as old cars or something like that.
Right.
Yeah, we can't do nothing about that. I mean, if you see like bags of trash.
What concern do you have the animals that draws?
Going out there.
The environment.
When we go out there and see the bags of trash and stuff like that, we can do something, everything else we can.
Did you look out?
Yes.
Well, occupants weren't moved out and the property owner weren't given permission, didn't we get a crew together and putting it up after the people leave, did they left?
Or what if they paid even a fine and you hired someone?
And I don't know if y'all run into, yeah, a lot of, like, we'll get complaints from Beryl or Green Forest or whatever, and I go and look at them, it's something I can't do nothing about. And then I usually call their code enforcement officer and they takes them over, uh, but if there is, all, all we can do is the trash, honestly.
Yeah, just like there's.
There is a way for the, the, the city, we don't, that's part of this, these ordinances, once, once we have the ordinances in place. And we have, have a code enforcement officer, we would have some recourse to go in and, and clean up property and charge it, put a lien against the property back.
But what, what about just, you know, if, if a bunch of neighbors got together and got permission with the property owner and go clean it up? Because it was disgusting to them.
At least they could.
Yeah. So, I think there are.
You get a bunch of neighbors that have cleaned it up.
I, I understand we don't have the power to do anything until we have an ordinance on the books.
Right.
We don't have any legal power or authority over anything.
There you go.
As an individual citizen or a group of citizens, if you got the property owner's permission, if they were gone and the occupants weren't there.
I'm on the.
How do we find Mr. Property Owner's information?
Oh, it's on the county counter.
Okay.
If it's a bank or if it's an individual, you'll find him.
Okay. And is there anything that you've done about the dog feces on their back? I can smell it on my back porch, it is.
You can, if, if you can get the property owner, as, as long as the occupants aren't there.
Yeah, it's, it's unreal. Yeah, I've had the health department, we've had VHS.
I'm kinda surprised that the health department hasn't done something about it.
Really? Yes.
They've been.
But I went there yesterday to the front door, it's covered in, um. Insulation, insulation, broke up insulation, pink insulation all across the porch and these kids are in this.
Yeah.
We didn't see no kids, but, but VHS and the health department.
They do have.
Weren't we told that VHS was out there and?
They have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would call them in today, just, yes.
Maybe.
We have really tried, me and her and the owner of our property, who is right around the corner. And, you know, and I can feel her frustration because she owns property next to it, you know, um. And if it wasn't, I've lived by people that were messing with, this is beyond that, you know, it's way beyond that, so.
Anyway, uh, if, if this exclusive contract for trash collection is just a step, you know, if we can get people.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Having trash collection, then these kind of situations shouldn't be able to develop.
They would have an opportunity to, to be able to, uh, get rid of their trash at that time.
Right, I mean, we, we, before it got to be the kind of problem.
How are you gonna, I got a question, I don't wanna throw in a roadblock, but how are you gonna enforce that everyone does it?
Do I?
How are y'all gonna enforce that everyone does it?
The trash pickup? That, um, that's to be discussed, to be determined.
That's the thought when you said that, when you said that.
Shouldn't you discuss that clause with them since they're here?
Well, the, the way the other cities do it, and I don't know if y'all can, the way the other cities do it, they bill it on their water bill and it's, it's required and if they don't. They, if they have water, they, they don't have water if they don't pay. Yeah, so, I know, that's what I mean, how would y'all?
Discussion with the, with the district first because, and with the, uh, city attorney.
Why this ran, it was on there.
What?
It was their responsibility when this statute.
That's the way it was written.
We can't enforce that they.
This, this.
I don't know, that's what I was asking, I, I don't know.
This document says if people don't pay for their trash collection, you notify the city and me and.
And then our code enforcement officer.
And that, that's a difficult process.
Uh, because you got two entities here, we, we're not in charge.
But we have to get the cooperation of the district to provide us with, you know, current list of water meters and then there's going to be the issue of. Part-time people that have their water meter turned off when they're not here and.
I don't, I don't wanna get involved with water.
What about people with a well though?
Like I have no wells.
No wells, okay.
Only one.
Maybe one.
Damn sure. But anyway, I don't wanna get into, I, I've listened to too many arguments and gripes about how high the water bill is and I don't have anything else to do with it.
No, I don't think we can put it on the water bill, cause the city doesn't, city doesn't have the water department here that.
But y'all will have, like you said, she says that someone didn't pay, y'all will have somebody to.
Right.
Well, we, we will have a code enforcement officer.
Okay, that's why I didn't know how it'd be enforced.
Yeah, as soon as we get this ordinance passed, this ordinance, um, authorizes me to hire a code enforcement officer.
That was my thought, cause you know, if you say we got exclusive and we send them all a bill and they don't pay it, well, what are we gonna do? You know, I didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah.
If you have someone that, that, that I could work with, uh, like. Right now, we send variable recourse to Eureka around the twentieth of each month, what's called an overflow sheet. So that they can put it on the bills, okay? I'm not saying we can put it on your bills by no means. We would still bill them, but we would send you an Excel sheet of the ones that we show have not paid in more than two months. Because our standard is, yes, you know, everybody frees their bill, you got till the twentieth of the next before I suspend it. And then the thirtieth, thirty-first, twentieth, or whatever, if it still not paid, then I close you. At that time is when we could, you know, put those customers and then I would just send you this spreadsheet.
And most people don't go to that, cause it's reactivation and all, yeah, most people don't go to that.
So at that time, it's about two months.
Yeah, my understanding is that you will actually send out the bill, well, I, you know, I have debit.
I'm, I'm on the autographs, the past couple months, no, month before, I sent everybody a bill or a statement. And, you didn't get it?
I didn't.
Okay, yeah, there was like one of those.
That's, anyway.
But anyway, yes, we can mail out the statements.
I, 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 I think this is a good solution to the billing problem.
One more question, um, the, uh. Mayor McCandy from Beryl spoke to Ruppery a few weeks ago and talked about, uh, their deal of having sell tags and to get to the bags or whatever. As part of your service, you need to buy additional.
Mm-hmm.
How do you handle that now?
Well, it mostly for elderly that really don't put out.
Extra bags. No, you're talking about extra bags.
Extra bags.
Oh, the extra bags, I'm sorry. Yes, the city of Beryl and city of Green Forest, um, you go to their water department and purchase a bag tag. And they sell it to you and then, uh, we get a portion of that.
So it's not a bag, it's a bag tag?
It's a bag tag, yes.
But see, but see that, like I said, everyone's got different contracts. They set up their contract, the city of Beryl set up theirs, one bag per household. So they sell a lot of ta- I mean, it depends on what you want. If you wanna go with the services we got, which is the easiest thing in the world to do. And just require that we pick up their trash, I mean, it, it.
Cause now, it's whatever I get in that ninety gallon barrel.
Yes, yes.
Cause that's the, cause that's the service you picked.
Yes.
And that, and I think.
There have been times that I thought that if I had excess bags that I put on top, that I'd be charged for that.
Yes, most generally, sometimes drivers, you know, especially if you didn't have it, I believe, before.
Our drivers try to be, if we got the same driver on the route and he knows you have it full and then you got some stick it out of it.
I expect to pay, so I, I'm just making sure that's how that works.
Yeah.
Beryl has a.
My wife.
I get.
Green Forest has two bank service.
My wife says she.
And if I, I mean, the best thing to do is not y'all, not require a certain kind of service, just require a service, right? You know, because all the, I mean, every contract's different in every city.
Every family's different.
I think this exclusive services, the only thing that's gonna work and, and, you know, it, there's gonna be problems, but.
Oh, yeah, people, y'all gonna have a full, we're in the next term, I mean, it.
Uh, I don't, you know, the only thing that, you know, that. Do we anticipate have, you know, having these folks have some kind of a hearing or a book or, or forum or.
Like a public forum or something.
To let them present, you know, when we get to that point where we're gonna.
You require.
They would come back and talk.
We can, we can show up at a council, whatever y'all want, I mean, we're.
Uh, yeah, cause there's gonna be pushback.
Well, you say that, but, you know, this was a publicly announced meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's necessary.
Everybody knew that trash collection was gonna be.
I, I, I hope, I hope I'm wrong, but I, all I know is I, I went through it fifteen years ago and, you know, I'm on the BLC and there was a lot of.
Well, you know, we did agree, just go ahead, sorry.
I'm not gonna say there won't be any grumbling, if, if we decide to do it, but, um, but I'd be surprised if they get.
I'm not afraid of the grumbling because I think it needs, it's, it needs to happen.
We did this in Green Forest twenty years ago or something and, and we thought it was, I don't know how long ago it was, but it was gonna be, everybody thought it was gonna be a nightmare. All, you know, around town, everybody's dropping, it was so smooth, when we started picking it up, it worked.
Most of the people that are grumbling now aren't here anymore, so.
If they don't show up here. April, where do you get your address list from? So that you know who's not or who is on your list.
The best way is from water meters, cause I can import those into my system.
Water meters or turned-on water?
Water meters, doesn't matter if it's turned on or not.
But, cause a lot of people have houses that are on, you know, just being sold.
True, on vacation.
I think that's where we go with this man of a thing.
Yeah, and, and that's the best way for my system to import it is based on the water meter number. So that's why it doesn't matter if it's turned on or not.
So what about my, am I paying double for my irrigation?
No, no, because there is a difference.
Got to irrigate those rocks.
That, however, uh, like Eureka Springs is where I first learned several, anyway, a long time ago. That a lot of people have a water line and then they have an irrigation line.
Yeah.
But it's the numbering that she explained to me that determined whether it's a regular water line or an irrigation line. So you could, they just tell us.
Cause you don't wanna do it on every vacant, I mean, that'd be the best way, cause you don't wanna do every vacant property or not, you know, you wanna do with the residents or.
Yeah, the, the, um, that's why I say I have to talk to the district, I haven't talked to them yet about being involved in this, but. They will have to provide us with a list of water meter customers and there's, there's gonna have to be a process by which that gets maintained. Because, you know, there's a lot of rental property in Holiday Island, so the, uh, you know, the water meter will be in the renters' name.
And if you don't.
And, um, so if they move and somebody else moves in, we need to be able to tell you.
That's what I was gonna say, you don't just want it exclusive that we're the only ones here, that ain't gonna make us pick up the trash, unless you make it where everyone's required to do it, you know?
Uh.
Somehow.
But you'll have to know who to bill, you know?
Yes.
Correct.
If somebody new moves in.
Or you got new ho- new homes.
Yeah.
So you're prepared to make changes on the, the person's name and address?
Oh, yeah, the ci- yeah, like the cities now, they will email us once a month, you know, the, the person's name, the address, uh, their account number with the water company. And then moved out, moved in, that type of thing. That's, that's a format that we can fit and tailor to what you can do.
Cause every single one's different.
That, that's the one good thing, I mean, we're big enough to where I can work with what you need. But we're not so big that I say, well, this is what I have. Does that make sense?
Are you also under the same security situation that we have with our water system that, uh, we cannot release the names?
No, we cannot release the names of.
So you are under that same security privacy aspect?
Yeah, any kind of company, yes, uh, whether we are or not.
That should relieve us of that concern that the government have releasing that data.
We don't release information about it, of course. I mean, if, if somebody calls, we do see this a lot, somebody calls, wants to give their trash guy a Christmas card, okay? We're giving them the name, that's it. I don't like putting on the route sheets, uh, vacation, you know, won't be back till, no, don't be that.
Yeah, just.
Right, it is our employees, but don't be that.
Yeah, my, my house won't, there won't be anybody. My, my house won't, there won't be anybody in my house.
Yeah, so we do.
If you want to come.
We do take it very seriously.
That's why my, my wife won't post anything on Facebook when we're on vacation, because that, that advertises to the world that there's nobody in your house.
In this day and time, it does.
But I also have to look at the county, you know, in oddity purposes, I have to answer for all of this. So, I'd rather play on the safe side.
There's a lot of detail to work out as far as the contract and, you know, what kind of service we need and, and how we're gonna manage the billing and all of that kind of stuff, so, um, you know, when we get to that point, we're gonna have to have another meeting to sit down and talk about, you know, what the contract would look like.
It's gotta happen. It's gotta happen.
We'll have, we'll have, yeah, we'll have to, I mean, a lot of it is up to y'all, I mean, and we can, we can tell you what we wanna do, but I mean, it's, really, it's up to y'all.
Who are the other, I'm just, I'm sure you know, because they're supposed to be licensed with you, um, who are the other carriers here?
Mallard, Ace, Osage might have some.
Osage is here.
Republic, uh.
Ex dumpsters.
Ex dumpsters, and he does mostly cleanups, um, he's not a weekly trash. Uh, I have a total of nine small haulers licensed.
But some of them don't come in, some of them in South Carroll County, yeah.
But you've got, you know, Mallard, Osage, ex dumpsters, Ace.
Ace and Republic.
Do y'all do a project, uh, construction dumpster?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We do temporary small ones weekly, and then we do twenties and thirty roll off ones, like what you see at construction sites.
So that would be a consideration as we do the contract to have that covered as well, I guess?
It usually is, yeah, it usually is.
It's usually part of the solid waste.
It was at one time.
That's how you keep from having multiple trucks.
And, um, uh, I have one more question, but it's gone now.
I have a ninety gallon container on my curb each week, is there a smaller container?
Sixty five.
Sixty five.
Well, you can go with the sixty five gallon cart that we supply, or you can get your own cans and do the two bag service, two cans.
Okay.
Yeah, because I was wondering, I and my wife, we recycle, so our garbage is typically, typically one thirteen gallon bag.
Exactly.
A week.
Yeah.
I don't need a fifty five.
True.
You provide your own trash can, we pick it up, yeah.
You could, in, in that suggestion, what I recommend when I talk to somebody like you that calls me, do a backpack. It's like a dollar sixty for each, you know, that you put on your bag.
He'd still be paying his minimum.
And you say you get twenty, well, if that lasts you twenty weeks, okay, if that lasts you two years.
Is that for thirty gallon?
That's for each, yeah, one backpack for each bag. Well, each bag, but it would, it's best if you could put it in a thirty gallon, that way you get two weeks and one tag.
Well, I got fifty five gallon garbage bag.
Well, honestly.
I do.
Honestly, we're not supposed to pick those up.
Okay, all right, so you limit it to a thirty gallon bag?
Uh, yeah, thirty, forty.
Thirty five, I think's what the.
Do a lot of people put yard waste in?
We see that frequently in the fall, yes, but it's, it's take long.
Yeah, we.
Yard waste is.
Our yard waste cannot go to an Arkansas empty.
They can reject our load.
Now, you can burn yard waste, that's the only thing in Arkansas you can burn, uh, is yard waste.
And maybe this comes up when we discuss this ordinance in more detail, but that's one of my main questions, is about what do we do about yard waste?
Yes.
You know what?
So.
As early as I'm.
Throw it over the.
Back takes it.
Well, burning is.
Introduce it.
So Arkansas says we can dump yard waste, but Arkansas doesn't allow yard waste dumps?
They are, yes.
They don't have a place where we can take tree limbs and leaves?
We don't, we're solid waste, we don't do yard waste at all.
Does anybody in Carroll County?
City of Eureka Springs.
City of Eureka Springs takes it on Wednesday.
But I don't know what they do for a city, but yeah.
Now, the recycle center there?
No, well, it's.
Behind the recycle, same driveway, but it's behind it, and they mulch it up, is what I think.
I think, I mean, it's.
I'm worried about having a fire.
I am too.
I've gone there for years, and I called Eureka, and it was fine.
Almost like never fired.
Was there a warning?
I'm doing a plastic bag.
No.
We had a forest fire in there one time, just like.
I have a trailer, like limbs or leaves and stuff I put in, I, uh, put in a trash can and dumped, but there was a lot of people bringing in plastic bags and dumping plastic bags.
They have a compost facility is what they got there?
Yes, you have to take the plastic bags with you, but yeah, you can haul it there.
They compost it then, and tree limbs and stuff, they chip and compost.
But then you can also get on their list when they go to disperse the compost. But any of those questions or anything like that, you can talk to them at public works.
You know, we could probably, in time, we could probably work something out with the district to use the depot up there, you know, that big vacant lot for vacay.
Well, that's what I always thought, and I, you know, I've always been interested in that.
The problem we're gonna have is that that's, uh, Kenny already has a problem with people beating the gate down and dumping refrigerators and stuff back in there, so.
But if you control it in some way, it might be possible.
Again, you know, you, you start out doing something, you know, that ninety-nine percent of the people are going to appreciate and not abuse, and then you'll have one or two.
I mean, you got so many people out here, they're like me, for instance, and some of you, that, uh, you don't have a truck. You know, if you, if you don't want to burn, because you don't really have any suitable place to burn it, or you're, you're frightened of it, like me.
Or we do, the thing that's really worrisome.
You wouldn't want me to set a fire.
Is if you go across from my house or behind his house, I'm not so sure we're not creating a hazard in the woods.
Oh, absolutely.
Piles of leaves that's.
Yeah.
And trash that high, and it's in part because we have huge options, so.
We don't have any options.
I mean, you call Kenny, you'll chip up.
Small yard places to deal with.
Somebody was doing that a week or so ago, there was.
Yeah, they do that all the time.
Pulling a big, a big tarp, uh, dragging a big tarp across Holiday Island Drive full of leaves, heading towards the vacant lot to dump all their leaves.
Ace, I don't know, how many leaves is it?
Sunday, we, what's that, what's the neighbor, or his bags full of leaves, and dumping down in the car.
Well, I've seen him off of five, especially a lot.
It's because we have no options, and we have no options.
Well, apparently we do, we can have someone haul it to Eureka Springs to the, uh, yard waste site.
Well, that's.
That's the option we have.
It's the option, maybe. Find the person haul.
Right.
Right, let's, uh, let's get off the yard waste here, because they don't do yard waste.
Uh, might wanna consider getting into it, sounds like.
You know, the yard waste.
We'll, we'll, we'll look into it.
No, no.
We're in.
Don't, don't call me, I'll call you.
Anyway.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Is, uh, Carroll County Solid Waste a profitable operation? Are you gonna be here in twenty years?
Uh, yes.
We've been here since ninety-three, we're doing, we're doing.
I didn't know you'd be here in twenty years.
Nobody knows.
Let me answer the question, please.
We have established foundation.
Okay.
And outside of a major disaster with our board, uh, chairman, the mayor's, the county judge, I don't see us going anywhere.
Trash is going nowhere.
Well, that's my concern.
Lot of waste.
Lot of.
Well, we, we have very secure jobs.
We have, they.
Y'all, everybody produces trash.
I understand that, but my concern is what legislators above us in the state and the federal levels might do to someone like Carroll County Solid Waste?
We have.
Because you're small, compared to the big guys.
But we, we are a dist-
We do, because we are a district, they're, and they are part of this regional, or not regional, the districts, the directors of all the districts of Arkansas, and they're even more, they even work yearly on legislation and having a spokesperson be involved in that state legislation.
We have, uh, what are they called?
That's what I was starting to say, that, that.
What's our guys called that go to the senators and the legislation?
Lobbyists.
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 We actually, we actually, uh.
Working for us.
I'm, 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 I believe that the district was formed by order of the county judge, right?
No, the district, no.
I thought the county judge had to initiate that.
Phil Jackson has been looking for us to become a district for a long time.
Phil and Mayor.
We were founded as an authority, yeah.
Yeah, the district only became the, uh, didn't, I mean, I really, you know, Sam Barra, I don't know.
Well, it, it was, it was, the whole door approved it, but Mayor Ken and Phil worked closely because Phil knew a lot of the senate, they, you know, knew a lot of the political about it, uh, and it finally passed, two thousand nineteen, but we had to get the approval of, uh, AGQ.
We had to go down Little Rock, and it was the land, land and resource.
But the point is, but the point I'm getting at, the district will never go away.
No.
No, that's what I was gonna say.
No.
District now in Arkansas, and even if Carroll County Solid Waste goes away, the district will never go away.
Are you considered a governmental body under the school of state?
Yes.
Yes, nonprofit, nonprofit governmental, we were actually created by Act seven and.
And we've got a good standing company, uh, nobody owns the company, a good standing company, but a good standing, uh, board members, uh, that oversee the company, um, I just.
And we're not here to.
So I think it's district.
Nobody's gonna come in and buy Carroll County Solid Waste.
Yes, it's a state.
We're under, we're under the division of environmental quality.
Yes.
I bet the original authority, though, that the Solid Waste Authority, I bet, was actually found or established by order of the county judge.
Yes, the authority was.
When we were created by.
The move up to being a district was done by the board, but.
Yeah, the authority or whatever it was, then you're, you said. But I think.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, that new. Lincoln's questioning, are we gonna, are we gonna quit or, or move out or dissolve Carroll County Solid Waste?
No.
Um, okay, I'm sorry, it was Act six ninety-nine of nineteen seventy-nine, and Act nine nineteen of nineteen seventy-nine. Became a status of public body and by corporate employee percent tax, six ninety-nine of nineteen seventy-nine.
And we take.
We were created.
We take them a district very seriously, um. Carroll County is really, and, and we do got some customers in Missouri, you know, along eighty-six and, and along County Road here, and I know but, and we're just as serious about taking care of those customers, but.
We're not you don't.
We are very concerned about taking care of the needs of Carroll County.
Well.
People and towns. And, uh, not to make a profit, we're a nonprofit.
We're here to provide some jobs, pay our employees, and buy equipment.
And buy equipment.
Honestly.
And do the best service. What kind of dividend do you pay?
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for coming over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your, your weapon comes back anytime, uh, Dan come to anytime you have any questions.
Yep.
Well, I hope we don't have to have a forum, because I think it'd be.
We've been to Eureka Forest, we've been to.
Y'all make the rules, we'll fulfill the contract, and there we go.
Well, I, I, I just remembered, you know, I'm around too long, I just remembered what my other contract, or my other question was. Uh, do, uh, do any other, of the other cities, does Green Forest, Berryville, or, uh, or Eureka Springs, do any of those have multiple carriers, or are they all exclusive?
They are all exclusive with us, exclusive contract. My fact, we run a lot up and out of those towns a lot, you know, how, once that don't know, um, you know, uh, waste management knows, but they may be somebody's seat, somebody else in the office that day, somebody had called from Berryville and ordered a container, uh, a thirty yard container, and they sat one, and then we'll have to have them remove it, but we are, we are the only exclusive holders, and that's the way the contract is real better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, uh, the first Saturday, are you gonna call me on that damn first Saturday in May? Or is that pretty much a go, you feel?
I, I don't know that we have, uh, they didn't have a dog in the fight. They don't, they don't do it, because they're just county customers.
Oh, okay.
He said that. So.
I would set it up to the district.
I think that the, the district usually made some sort of an announcement about it, but, um.
We ma- we mailed out letters.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so you don't need any approval from us or anything.
If you put your stuff out the day before, half of it we don't, and again. Which helps us. I don't know how you guys feel about it, I wouldn't offer that.
Never. Maybe I have to get rid of that busted up, uh.
Yeah.
Computer cabinet that's in the office.
That's got to be functional.
I should have made that a condition before you guys come over, and all that up.
Dan, will you last words, just stick right on there?
No, you don't have to stick it on, we, I think, we picked you ready enough.
Thank you.
We'll let you go back and work.
Thank you.
Thank you for the use of law.
One thing about your business, it's always picking up. Uh.
Thank you. We're gonna take a five minute break before we.
Okay.
I already did.
We'll, uh, recess for five minutes.
Water is gone.
I'm gonna go into the elite teams. I'm gonna have to have my wire.
So we should adopt the.
All right, we're back out of recess, we're going to, uh, we're, the, the way we'll, you know, um, approach the rest of the morning here, and I do plan on being done in an hour, um, or we're gonna cut it off in an hour, I'm gonna go through all of these, uh, sections of the code and just ask if anybody has any questions or comments, I'm not gonna read the entire thing.
We're gonna just go into sanitation, five oh four.
Not, well, we'll start out there, but then we're gonna go into five oh eight.
Okay, I got a lot of.
Just make sure we get through five oh four.
Yeah, five oh eight's gonna be a real issue.
Okay, five oh four oh one, any questions on that paragraph?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When, uh, we have title regulations, usually title five point oh one would be a title paragraph, there's a use of section and titles, what the whole thing is about, so my question is, are there missing sections five oh one through five oh three that we need to add, add in here?
Uh, it, it, um, starts under chapters.
Okay.
On this page, the chapters start with, uh, five oh four sanitation, so, um, I, again, I'm honorably adopting this from another city.
Okay.
So, uh, they obviously just reserved five oh one to five oh three.
Okay.
So five oh one, oh, uh, five oh four oh one created, any questions there?
No.
No.
Oh, two?
Well, just a terminology, why are we using garbage, garbage doesn't mean, you know, I mean, all the things, you know, when trash, do you have a better name for that?
Trash is defined differently.
Yes, it is.
Mm-hmm, well, garbage is not shrubbery and furniture and machinery and. What the hell are the difference about it, is the, garbage to me is food stuff, anyway.
Trash is defined as any item worth little or nothing, such as things that are no longer useful or wanted, and that have been thrown away, also known as chaff, deadwood, debris, drag, dross, dust, junk, litter, huffle, off scoring, raffle, refuse, riffraff, rubbish, scrap, filth, or waste, it's different than.
It doesn't make a lot of difference.
No, that's what I think we need to add, definition for trash, and then put trash in a couple of the places. Uh, anyway.
So you're saying add a definition, add the definition of trash?
Yeah, and then there'll be, there'll be, there'll be places where we insert the word trash, because it says garbage, but we probably say hand trash and that kind of thing.
Garbage is like virtually everything you could think of.
Garbage is defined as, uh, stuff that comes from waste of, of, uh, food or.
Organic.
Yes, organic waste.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, that, this doesn't do.
It includes cans and jars.
It says garbage is animal or vegetable waste resulting from the handling, preparation, cooking, and consumption of food.
This, this, this means trash.
Right, so that's why we need to add trash as a definition, and then put trash in the appropriate spots.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay, well, does that address the issue that I see, doesn't this say that garbage includes grass leaves, shrubbery, and small trees? Which they cannot take? which they cannot take? That doesn't mean you exclude it from the definition. Okay. You know, just because it's, just because it's a form of garbage doesn't necessarily mean that the contract that we have with Carroll County would include picking that up. Okay, if it didn't say, unless the contract says they'll pick up garbage, then we.
Did you pick this up from one of our local Carroll County cities or a different city?
I think I started with Conways.
Okay, because maybe they do pick up yard waste in Conway.
Well, he.
Lot, lot larger cities do.
Where it came from did, uh, it'd be a separate container, but it was a, they picked up.
Do you wanna, you wanna scratch the part about grass, leaves, shrubbery, and small trees?
Yeah, I think Wes's point is that it needs to be consistent with the contract that we're anticipating.
Well, now that's down there, it doesn't work, the only pens that work here are the ones that Glenn buys.
Keaklin, Keaklin's work, oh.
All these freebies, maybe the key is, if you buy the pen, it'll work, if it's a freebie, it won't.
Oh, these are all free, that says holiday in. This one says quality in.
Right, anything else that needs to be scratched out of?
I don't think the pillows.
Do what?
Well, we may wanna revisit the paragraph once we get the contract.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Alright, business, commercial, reliable fees, that'll have to be negotiated, payment of fees, any questions?
No.
Disposition of funds, just says the money goes into the general fund, uh, containers. No, that just basically says it'll be negotiated.
Yeah.
Burning or dumping, it'll be unlawful to burn or dump.
Well, I have a question here, we need to qualify what can be burned. Somewhere.
Well, it says.
And is that under the.
Says any trash or garbage.
Says unlawful to burn, period.
Well, I'm, yeah, my question was more the opposite of, of where are we gonna put what can be burned, is that under another, the burning five oh eight, is that there?
Maybe.
Does that, well, it's, oh, we got a whole section, but is that thing?
We have a whole section.
Does that throw any garbage or trash? Do we need to order trash?
Well, I guess that came to mind because the first sentence of five oh eight says, no person shall burn trash, garbage, or other types of waste material in any manner whatsoever.
Yes, and that.
That matches five oh four oh nine.
Yeah, five, five oh four oh nine basically reaffirms state law. State law says you can't burn garbage. Period.
Okay.
Okay, so now, question, if we go back to where, if we eliminate grass, trees, shrubbery, and small trees from five oh four oh two, does that mean?
Yeah.
That you can burn?
Oh, we're gonna deal with that.
Yeah, it just, it, it'll be in a different section.
Probably.
If we allow burning of yard waste, it'll be in a different section. Okay.
So this will just like the garbage?
And trash it says, five oh four oh nine.
Oh, and trash?
Trash or garbage.
Okay.
And since we refer to trash and garbage, it confirms that we need to add a definition of trash.
The trash and garbage are things that can be picked up by the caller.
Yes. Alright, fines.
I thought those fines were awfully small.
I think they're too small.
Well, except they're kinda daily, they kinda carry a per cent of the day.
Yeah, that's, that's where they get you in.
Anyway, can I end up quickly?
And, and I, I'd have to go back and reread, uh, sixteen ten three oh five, the state law may limit what you can, how much of a fine you can impose.
It says.
Well, actually, this one is not a daily, but it, it has the lights, the second, third, fourth, fifth.
Yeah.
As these, and we'll see.
And by the way, you know, once we get this hammered off to the point that we like it, we're gonna have to run it by Justin anyway, because of the fact that there are fines and penalties involved. Alright, uh, section twelve, inspectors.
Did we pass five oh four oh two definition already?
What?
Uh, the only reason I ask because it doesn't have the word trash in that paragraph at all.
You, you already brought that up, I made a note to add a definition of trash.
Okay.
Alright, um, now we're up to penal, or to inspectors. This authorizes the, uh, code enforcement.
Sounds good.
Third game, penalty.
In our discussion on zoning, uh, when we talked about penalties, we added some text to, uh, say the city can recover its prosecution costs. Is this the place where we would put that? Someone talks about a fine.
Yeah, I can, I can raise that question, I, I don't know how we would go, you know, that.
Acts if it goes to district.
That, that basically, I think, I think from a legal perspective, they would say that that's what the fine does. That, you know, the city is not supposed to make money off of fines.
We don't make money recovering costs.
Doing it.
Yeah. Now, if the cost is five thousand dollars to prosecute the case, shouldn't we be able to recover that if we win?
Yeah.
So, my point or my question is, do we have to have it in here to say we want to recover those costs? My concern is if it doesn't say that we want to recover, the judge can say you don't get your cost.
I'll ask Justin a question, can we try to recover the cost of prosecution?
Thank you. And is this also the same place that we would, uh, put a paragraph to talk about if we have to clean it up?
Um, that is further down.
Okay.
Enforcement. This just basically says that, that, um, the county can also enforce county and state regulations. Authority to contract for service, that just means that if, if the city does something to clean up that Carroll County couldn't or wouldn't do, then we're authorized to hire somebody else to do it. Volty items, this gets to the, uh, to the pickup thing, and this will be basically negotiated as part of the contract too. So that may change after we get the contract hammered out.
Volty item thing, all that, it's gonna really depend on the contract.
Five oh four nineteen, limits on yard waste, there, I, I reserve that, right now, it's nothing. Five oh four twenty, white goods, electronic waste, and also that, that'll be part of the negotiation. Charges at the landfill, I don't think we would even get into that, but if we ever do in the future, um, there'd be a section there for it.
That's fifteen?
Yeah, uh.
About twenty-two.
Around twenty-two.
Twenty-two, what, where was the yard waste, did you say? Which section was that?
Reserved.
I just, just reserved because yard waste is not, they don't pick up yard waste, so, um, but it's there in case someday in the future we want to provide for that. Alright, um, waste being transported through the landfill. This basically says that the hauler has to make sure they're not, uh, just, you know, spreading our trash all, all over the county. And then I made a note for myself, uh, five oh four twenty-four about recycling, that I think we need to add a paragraph in here about, I don't think we can make recycling mandatory necessarily, but we can put something in here about.
Well, the service being able to provide recycling services.
Yeah, it's not, man, it, it's not an issue other than the fact that I think we should note in here, um, something about recycling.
We did say that Holly, Holly does a pretty good job of doing that.
Well, I mean, I mean, the contract has, will have to include that we did, you know, trash and, or rec- provide for recycling. And do. I don't, I'm not sure that some of the other ones do.
I've seen, I mean, this, this paragraph will probably say something to the effect that Holiday Island, the city of Holiday Island encourages recycling, or something that similar, but.
The contract has to provide recycling.
But, um, but it would, it would support doing things like having the, you know, the cardboard dumpsters across the street and stuff like that. So, you know, either way, they provide as a free service to Holiday Island, Carroll County does.
So, where do we go from here? But we can't really do much with this until we hammer out what the contract is gonna look like, you know?
Um, uh, I'll probably sit down and, and, you know, I gave a copy of this to George, and he'll probably, and, you know, he and I can talk about it, um, I'm kinda thinking, because we wanna get this going fast.
Right, and I don't think, you know, in some places, this is trying to mirror what the contract is, and the contract is, should, I mean, this should just talk about the general, what, so, I, I, I mean, I, sometimes I think it's more specific than this, than the, um.
I think a lot of us are more kind of interested in the details, but it shouldn't be in the ordinance.
Well, other than the fact that there's gonna have to be future contracts negotiated, and maybe that contract won't be with Carroll County Solid Waste, so you don't want your, you know, you don't want their contract being the regulation.
Right, that's, that was the point I was trying to make.
Yeah, but, but I'm, what I was gonna suggest is that we have, that, that, uh, we get the ordinance as close as we can to being what we want, uh, subject to modification, because this will have to do, we'll have to do three readings on this as well.
Right.
So, if, if we have to make some modifications to it, you know, as long as we get it done before the third reading, then we, we'd be fine.
And we have a first reading next month.
That's what I'm planning on.
Okay.
Alright, hold on for.
I, I agree, we need, we talked about that.
Just the same, the five, the five.
We can't do, can't do that.
It's the sanitation section.
Okay, we, you know, I will contend to do this whole thing.
Okay, well.
Next week.
We're, we're gonna be working the same day.
More as much of it as we think we can do.
I agree.
Okay.
Alright, so if there's nothing more on, uh, section five oh four, then we can move on to five oh eight, maintenance of real property. Oh, boy. Again, I'm not gonna read this, does anybody have?
I had a little problems with, it says no person.
Yeah.
Except as provided in section five oh eight ten. Or we got a.
I've got a ton of questions.
I think we, we both got a ton of questions.
In five oh eight dot oh seven, probably I had the same question, man, under pull up number one.
Already, the, the copy you guys have, my last copy that I sent out, should have had in red all of your suggestions.
Oh, okay, right.
And, uh, and I put in there under five oh eight oh seven one, A one, court costs and cost of prosecution.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions, comments on?
Was that, this thing, we're, we're outlaw burn barrels, right?
No.
No.
Doesn't matter.
It's.
Well, I don't know what.
Incinerate.
I, I don't know what it's.
Well, the fire from the white's ring and red, that leaves is the.
Only incinerators conform with the Arkansas Air Force Control Code, I have no idea what that is.
Then you can't have one if you don't know, if you wanna burn, you need an incinerator, it means that too.
There's somewhere in there that says you have to have a, a permit from the, uh, approved by the fire chief.
Right, right.
That's down below, yes.
Way down.
Yeah, you gotta get approval from the fire chief to light it, but you have to have the right container to light.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just wondering what, you know, what, what does that look like?
It's the size of a, typically it's the size of a half of a container, and it's got a specific chimney on it, and it's got a collector for debris, so the smoke comes out of the clean.
What's a half a container?
Uh, it's not a full truckload, but a half truckload sized box, uh, thirty yards, whatever they call that sized container, it's a big chunk of metal.
It's huge thing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, my, my problem with this is that B says burning will be allowed by individuals and businesses with some restrictions, but A says no person shall burn trash, garbage, or other types of waste in any manner whatsoever.
Except as.
Totally contradictory.
I see what you're saying.
Except as provided under five oh eight ten.
So is, then B should be under five oh eight ten?
That's good.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, you're right.
It's confusing, and it's odd.
I had a little problem with that, yeah.
Yeah, I think she's right, it has to be, as an exception, so you just wanna make the one statement.
Yeah.
And then the exceptions, all go with the exceptions, that makes sense. Uh, when we get to ten.
On the next ten.
Uh, I'm scrolling through those too.
Yes, oh, it's gone, it's two pages down.
So how about if I say, um, within the, um, that, that no person shall burn trash, garbage, or other types of waste material in any manner whatsoever within the city limits, except as provided in this code?
Five eight ten.
Well, doesn't that be five oh eight ten?
Well, that's where all the exceptions.
That's where all the exceptions are.
That's where all the exceptions are.
Wouldn't that make it flow a little easier?
Yeah.
Just put all the exceptions in one section. I think the, B makes no sense whatsoever.
Well, it makes sense, it just doesn't make sense right there.
I think it just needs to be.
You can make it one of the bullet points under five ten, I mean, five oh eight ten.
That's, I agree.
Maybe speaking, third K.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, got that, correct? Ready to move on to oh seven?
Yeah. What?
Seven.
Penalties.
Penalties, I added the, under, uh, item one, uh, court costs, or court, court costs and cost of prosecution with a question mark.
I have a big problem with seven already.
Alright, move on to oh eight, littering declared illegal.
Yeah. And that's this one.
Should there be a cost of, or a cost of prosecution? Number? You, issue the citation of littering?
Unless it's your, at the far end, or then it's, then you do that.
In five oh eight dot oh eight. In five oh eight dot oh eight, the concern I have is that, um, well, I, I might know what it is, it's interesting, if, if a company's property owner, the employee, being a tenant, is involved in an accident like littering for a property owner while performing work renting, the company is sued along with the employee. So is somehow just the property owner only going to be the ones declared illegal and, and fined, or is the property owner somehow gonna be involved in this for the renter's situation? We hold the owner of the property responsible for what the renter's doing, is the question.
D says you can't.
That's why, that's my question, why?
I don't know, how are you gonna enforce it?
Well, if I own a piece of property and the tree on my property falls on the neighbor's house, the property owner's responsible for it, not the renter.
That's not littering.
I know, I'm just asking the question, should the property owner be tied to the littering problem?
Well, you know, here's a consideration.
I don't love it.
It's real hard to get rid of a renter if they're not doing stuff the right way. I mean, you can't hardly kick a renter out.
Okay.
So, so what do you do?
You go after the property owner.
You don't, no, the property owner has so little, uh, ability to kick out a renter, seriously, in Arkansas.
It takes a while. It takes a while.
It takes forever. And, and so you can't, I don't think you can hold the property owner.
And it's not just Arkansas holding. I don't see how you.
You have to go after the renter.
Well, it, it, and, you know, in the theory of suits, you go after the deepest pockets to get your things accomplished, and the pocket owner is the guy who owns the property. And if you can't go after him, you put a lien on his property.
But his hands are tied, how are, why are you holding him responsible? He can't get rid of this, he can't force his renter out of the property.
Uh, technically, I don't think it's litter if it's on, you know, if I'm renting a house, and I throw trash in the front yard, as long as it stays in the front yard, it's not litter. It's only litter when it goes into the neighbor's yard.
What if it, C says that if it remains on the property, it's not litter.
Right, so I don't know, I'm not sure how you would pull the property owner.
But it says, uh, it's, it's, if the litter remains on the property and the act does not create a public health or safety hazard, a public nuisance or a fire hazard, which it could.
I don't know, I think, you know, I'm not even sure.
Well, so Lynn, your, your issue is, you don't like, you don't like statement D, that the property, where we say the property owner shall not be held responsible.
Right.
I just know people who have rented out their property to what appeared to be decent citizens, and they trashed it, totally trashed it, and they couldn't.
And just talked about one earlier, so does that probably?
There's a difference between dumping and litter again, I think.
Right.
Well, that, that, that situation, probably probably started as littering.
I, I'm guessing that, I'm, I'm guessing that there's a whole can of worms relative to
Littering.
owner's responsibilities for the actions of their tenants. You know, because if, so if, 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 if we can hold the property owner responsible for the person littering, you know, what if the person robs a bank, is that, you know, can we hold the property owner responsible for, for them robbing the bank, or, you know, what are the limits on
Well, the.
personal responsibility?
What I tied it to was, uh, a company and an employee have an auto accident. The company's are sued as long as, as well as the employee driving the car. It always happens.
Yeah.
Even though the guy was just gonna go get lunch for the boss, he, the company could be sued for that accident. So why isn't the property owner also responsible for its renter, for its actions in this case? And I understand there's probably a can of worms, but that's why I asked the question, why is?
We're talking criminal versus civil too, civilly they could be.
Okay.
But criminally, do we want, I mean, that's what we're using. That's a little different. Criminally, you're not generally found vicariously liable from the act of desertment, civilly you are. So I, 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 I understand your point, I don't, I don't know what the solution is.
Yeah, you know, there is a, you know, a, an argument on the other side of that. You know, if, if a tenant creates a, um, superfund site on their, on that property, and the city has to go in and clean it up, um, we can put a lien against the property to cover the cost of doing that. So in this particular case, we would be holding the property owner financially responsible for the actions of their tenant.
But if we have to take the tenant to, find him or her, the property owner wouldn't be accountable for that.
Well, maybe C covers me, the person is the owner or tenant in lawful possession of property, and the litter remains upon the property. Maybe C involves the property owner. But then D is contradictory to that.
Yes.
Okay, what happens?
The key word there is unlawful possession of the property, which I'm thinking that may reside there.
You're making me sick. And, and it hurts.
Well, other than the paragraph, paragraph one in oh eight says, it's unlawful to dispose of litter on any public or private property. So even if it's the owner's property, that's private property, so it's illegal to save litter.
Well, what is litter? I don't know.
Well, I mean, but you got the unless, that lists the three exceptions, A, B, and C there.
She wouldn't book this up, when I read this before, it didn't seem like it was an issue.
Never in.
And then when somebody else throws something in, I said, it's not, it's not as simple as I thought it was.
Well, it's, it's a personal life experience, that's all. Yeah, litter is not defined in, you know, in this text.
I mean, we, we just went through that other one where, you know, it talks about all kinds of, really helping and everything, so this, I don't know, this.
I don't know, it was like being a.
I don't know why we got, why are we differentiating?
I think that D is intended to, to differentiate between if the owner is the one living on the property and creating the, and, and creating the litter, or the tenant is, you can't sue both, or you can't, you can't go after both. If it's a tenant, then the tenant's responsible, if it's, if the owner lives there, then the owner is responsible. That's the way I read it.
That's the way I read it.
Okay. Reuse the news.
All right, exceptions.
Okay, Jared.
I, I have a question on, uh, F down there. You said a hundred and fifty yards from any home.
Well, but we got problems before we get to there. Hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty yards, I'm assuming.
Feet and yards, what's the difference?
Well, I, I assume that you didn't mean.
Football fields?
It's, it's like.
I didn't do.
Yeah, everybody did, I go to a hundred and fifty yards, that is my home neighborhood.
It's like.
It's bigger than any lot we have out here.
To me, it's just like golf. I'm trying to hit the ball a hundred yards and I hit it a hundred feet.
And I'm gonna leave that one completely alone, I can't go. Uh, I'm not even sure a hundred and fifty feet is doing, but let's.
All right, so let's start at the beginning here, five oh eight, uh, ten, the initial paragraph. Uh, Lynn raised a question that the recently adopted building code, uh, might conflict with that.
Section nine S and trash burning, I quoted it there. Did you get a copy of that?
Prior to lighting, in the building code, we said, uh, prior to lighting, any fire shall be the responsibility owner and or builder to notify the office of the Holiday Island Fire Department, blah, blah, blah. So this is for burning stumps and stuff when you, when you're clearing a lot.
Right.
And. But from, and after thirty.
If you're somewhere over.
It's lumber.
It's scrap lumber.
That gives people no guidance whatsoever.
It gives the fire department authority, not us. We adopted that language.
I'm not sure I understand the first paragraph, but we, we're making some exceptions for land developers, builders, but not a homeowner?
That's the way to read it.
That's the, that's the issue, I think, what are we gonna do with homeowners, she brought it up before. Right, we, that, we go back to. We're given limited options to a homeowner and deal with.
Why aren't they not supposed to haul off their scrap lumber?
That's what we talked about when we adopted the building code, that it says, there's no, no fire once construction begins shall be permitted, which proposes to burn construction-related items, except for the fire chief orders.
And.
And brush is yard waste.
Well, that's not construction.
There's brush, there's brush.
It says burn brush and scrap lumber.
In that original text, yeah.
Anyway, I'm trying to get a hundred and fifty out of that.
I'm, I'm still saying, if, if we're gonna make any exceptions, let's talk about what the exceptions are later. For land developers and builders, we're not gonna have an exception for a homeowner of any kind?
Now, this should not be just for landowner.
Well, that's what I mean, why can't we at least put homeowner in there in addition to those other things? And then.
That, that, the exception should apply to everybody.
Well, according to this.
I know.
There are no exceptions whatsoever for homeowner.
Right.
Only for a builder or a developer.
Right.
Can't we just add in homeowner? And then we can discuss later what exceptions we want to apply to who, but that completely excludes the homeowner from anything. I will have some neighbors that are really upset about it.
I guess we need to talk about the cause of burning.
Well, I think philosophically, we need to decide where we're going before we start to try to round this word by word.
Everybody is going to be, um, mad about not being able to burn their yard trash until their house burns down.
Understood.
Understood, yeah.
And, and, uh, you know, I, I think it's something, it, it, I, I wish we had an alternative, because I don't like my neighbor piling up all of his leaves in the front yard and throwing a match, well, put gas on it first, and then throw a match in it when the wind's blowing towards my house.
I don't like driving through it when I drive down Holiday Island Drive, and it comes into my car.
I realize that a lot of people do it.
Well, I don't like it at all, but, but I don't like the alternative, which is people are throwing them over the hill and causing another potential hazard. So I, 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 I don't know what the solution is.
We have a comment from the public?
I oppose to that because, uh, if anybody has health factors, it's very, very, you know, irritating to, to those individuals.
It'd be two houses down.
Respiratory problems, you have.
It's exactly two houses down, isn't it?
A medical situation that could, you know, pose problems with the burning, asthma.
Yeah, okay, I, I'm fine with this, I'm, I'm one of the exceptions. You're not, um.
I don't know what, I don't.
I, I just think, I, I think the exception would, you know, would apply to homeowners also.
Well, I'm just saying, I.
I, I talk about all kinds of trash in my tree, I got a whole lot of trees that I don't burn really.
If we're gonna burn, ban burning, I guess that's really my point. Shouldn't we not do it for everybody? Or include homeowners with developers, and, I mean, I don't know why we're giving them something that a homeowner doesn't have. I, I think usually you don't have.
I think we need to develop a way to pick up yard waste and, and.
I don't think anybody just.
Or like to put it in links or something.
Whatever, and make arrangements somehow to take care of it that way.
Or we can probably finally, the city ban burning, period. But there is a big recycling ban probably the size of three football fields, or you could haul stuff to and dump it. Here, even the hauling to and dumping, unless you would hire, you know, video or someone to do it, most people here wouldn't have the wherewithal to be able to haul their yard waste.
My wife would get upset if I put that in her.
You know, I guess I don't, you know, we, we give contractors the, you know, the, we make the exception for the contractors to burn stumps and brush, basically. Uh, we don't give them the exception to burn construction materials. So, you know, we could, we could make the exception for everybody. Anybody can burn yard waste, as long as they're under the same controls that we put on the builder, which says that they have to have, um, that they can only burn certain times of the day, it's gotta be put out before four o'clock at night, um, they have to have water there while it's burning, and, uh, you know.
One of the things it says is, uh, don't burn them, you can't burn on windy days, what the hell does that mean?
We've got a burn ban that, that put the signs up and everything that.
I know, but shouldn't it say that?
Oh.
I, I mean.
Well, it says, it says you have to notify, if you're gonna burn.
You have to.
What we allow for in the building code is, if you're gonna burn, you have to talk, you have to notify the fire.
And they won't give you one.
If, if it's, if it's not safe to burn, he won't let you.
These guys along Holiday Island Drive that are burning leaves in their little trenches in front of their house.
Right.
They call the fire department, should they?
They don't, they don't today, but if they're trying to allow it. If they were gonna allow it in here, then they would, then I think we would have to have some, some sort of control over it. Otherwise, why even have a section in here about burning? If we're not gonna control it at all, if anybody can burn anything, anytime they want, anywhere they want, we'll just scratch the whole section.
With you, I think it should be truly law.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, you don't get a lot of pushback if you don't allow.
And you can, I mean, again, we're gonna get pushed back on just about everything we do.
People have been, people are used to being able to do anything they can do.
They do it with.
Which is a problem.
Problem. I'm, I'm, yeah, that's right.
So all we need to do is have homeowner. That's not gonna bite any homeowners, 'cause a hundred and fifty feet, I presume that's what you meant, still would knock out almost any home.
That's correct. It's like what we did for adult entertainment, half a mile away.
I don't have a problem with it, I just wanna make it.
Well, how can we write that?
I don't know, well, just put them in the, in the contractors and everything else, and make the restrictions the same for everybody. I just don't like it being different, I don't like the idea that a contractor can do something that a homeowner cannot do.
Right, why don't we do this? We're a long ways away from having something hashed out here. Why don't, why don't we just, for now, so we can get something passed next week, just reserve, reserve this whole section on burning?
God. I would like us at least to consider if Carroll County Solid Waste is not in a position to haul off debris and limbs and yard waste, that we maybe find a hauler that would haul it off.
See, that, I would feel a lot better about completely banning burning if we gave somebody a reasonable option to do with piles of leaves in their yard.
It'd be safer for everyone.
And, and I just do not like it, one of these days, somebody's gonna be smoking on the golf course, throw their cigar over the hill, and we're gonna have a fire under the alcoves on five, or seven, or six, or nine.
We came dangerously close a couple of years ago, they were burning leaves. The golf course made. The golf course maintenance guys were burning leaves on the driving range down by the creek and it got into the woods. And the fact that we had a hiking trail there that provided a fire break probably saved our ass.
And, and that's a natural accumulation.
For being recorded. I didn't mean.
I know, but that's a natural accumulation up the mountain five, more than a natural.
There was a fire in the woods behind the class park not too long ago.
Yeah.
Well, I, we need to think.
Well, for purposes of this, for the purposes of this, um, workshop, I'm gonna reserve.
Entire five oh eight, right? The whole thing?
No, just five oh eight, ten, and eleven. 'Cause those are the two paragraphs to deal with burning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, hinder drainage. And by the way, I'm, I'm writing a very, I don't know, not very long, about a one pager to add to the building code about drainage.
And five oh eight, twelve, that we're at, last sentence, big and lot not owned, past tense, or by some person rather does not own?
Yes, yes, I already, uh, added that.
All right.
In my copy.
So you're.
Is it from old W E M to old W E S B E?
There, there's something, something that, that I need to figure out before we, before we actually pass this, is that, for some reason, and again, I copied this from another city, but they revisit fines and penalties over and over and over again.
Because it has to do with each section.
Yeah.
They, they're assigning the penalty to each section, so the, it, it is separable, you know, if something happens to one section, it doesn't take away the rest of it.
But it, it, it generally says, like, like in this particular case, that any person convicted of violating this ordinance, well, the ordinance is Title XI or Title V or whatever. Um, so it's probably should say this, you know, section.
This chapter.
Order, this chapter or something.
If it's in every, if it's in every chapter, then it'd be this chapter.
Yeah.
Chapter five oh eight.
Yeah.
Five oh eight.
Okay, nuisance abatement. Open for comments. All right, I'm paging. I'm up to five oh nine oh four.
Five oh nine oh four, I don't understand that paragraph.
Coming back, I'm sorry, I'm catching up. In section five oh nine oh two, C, I added words at the end of that to say, and filed with the secretary of the city planning commission. So it's details of granting the modifications, so we get a record of it. It isn't just gonna be the code enforcement officer doing his thing in his files, but to let the city planning commission know.
So. Read the sentence after.
I'm, I'm just adding words. It says entered in the department files and I added, and filed with the secretary of the city planning commission. That's what I suggest.
Yes.
And C, five oh nine two, C, at the very end of that.
Why not? I had a, a question about five oh nine two, which was just a little bit above that. About code enforcement officer search paragraph.
Just let me, uh, let me finish up Lynn's thought on this. And, and filed with.
The secretary of the city planning commission. Rather than the, the chair, I thought, well, at least the secretary, because he's got the facilities to get it documented and that's his responsibility.
So is five oh nine oh two the main place where the job of the code enforcement officers defines?
Um, no, this is part of.
Pretty much.
It kinda establishes the position.
Yeah, they're too easy.
Uh, it, it says they're duly sworn and authorized.
Yeah.
Does that mean they're sworn in? Cause it, and the last sentence also says duly sworn law enforcement officers.
Yeah, I, I need to revisit that, there, you know, the, most cities, the code enforcement officer is actually a sworn officer, meaning they, they can serve, they can issue the warrants and stuff like that, um, with citations.
But they're not act, act, actual police officers, they don't have to go through.
They're a.
Clean certification.
I don't know, Danny, Danny explained it to me. Um, they're, they're almost like a police officer, they're a sworn officer. And, you know, they have to, you know, they have to qualify to be a sworn officer, so.
You have to swear to uphold the constitution of the state of Arkansas or something like that.
Yeah, but it, but there's, there are, you know, there are qualifications to be a sworn officer.
They probably have to sign something.
It's not just, and I think there's actually training and, and, and testing and stuff like that, that, you know, that, that you're, that, that you know what you're doing when you're issuing a citation.
In the next, next sentence.
And in our case, in our case, we would intend for the deputy, if it ever gets to the point of issuing a citation, that the deputy would actually serve that warrant or that citation because they are a sworn officer. So I need to revisit.
Oh, so this needs to be rewarded then?
I'm not sure that we're going to require our code enforcement officer to be a sworn officer.
Okay, okay.
Okay, can we get, can we get from Danny or whoever, what those requirements are?
Yeah.
It also said the code enforcement officer shall carry proper identification and present it before.
And, and I think that, um, that that would be appropriate anyway, even if he is not a sworn officer. We would need to provide him with some sort of.
Card or badge or something.
My business cards.
Or a badge.
Yeah, a badge.
You know, like wear a badge.
Big spark.
Exactly.
Okay. I will, double check that. All right, next.
They, that's a same, five oh nine oh four violations, that, that sentence doesn't make sense.
Which, which sentence?
Too far down.
I don't know, I thought somebody said anything, I thought we were done with five oh nine oh two.
Still looking over it.
Dan, I noted in paragraph E, um, you know, two, bullet number four, city's not capitalized, most of this document we have word city capitalized.
All right, change that.
Okay.
All right, right of entry.
Where are we at?
Five oh nine oh three.
Five oh nine oh three.
Can we go back up to D, I mean, E? Is that, is that even necessary?
We need to spell out that frivolous.
Who, who's the arbitrator of which frivolous, I, I think we should just, that's ambiguous.
It might establish expectations for the community to know that just because they file a complaint, we don't have to act on it.
Right, we ought to put a penalty in there for frivolous claim.
Oh, that's.
Well, I know.
Well, they may not consider it frivolous when they file with.
Are we the ones that determine what's frivolous?
I don't know.
I guess so.
I don't know, I, I don't think that's necessary.
I guess it's debatable.
Somebody's, somebody else's city attorney thought it was worth putting in there?
Right, 'cause the next one talks about substantive evidence. Evidentiary value, these are legal terms, I didn't miss a word.
Then she's gonna get frivolous.
Well, a lot of times the neighbor reports something, they don't have the evidence, they want you to go find the evidence.
The whole issue is frivolous is kind of a tie in the holder at times, too.
Yeah, I, I.
So, I, I, that's ambiguous, I would just, we'll deal with it, I guess. I guess this would be the excuse, what somebody calls in and complaining, you don't do anything about it, and you say, read paragraph E.
I think it gives the code enforcement officers some latitude in deciding whether or not it's worth pursuing.
It's one of those things that will play out over time, we'll find out how it works or doesn't work.
There's not, yeah, we think all this stuff is gonna be a one-time, you know, it's gonna fly. Of course, perfect is written. That's why it's gonna be graded on stone, so we can. In the name Moses. Amos Moses. Are we at three?
We're at three, yeah, I'm on three.
I have nothing with it. That's true, good to me, but I don't know.
I'm into me.
I just don't understand.
Up to four?
I don't understand A.
You don't understand four A?
Yeah.
There's a definition of strict liability misdemeanor, I looked it up, but I don't remember what it is. It's a strict liability misdemeanor means that you didn't have to, you don't, you don't have to prove intent. If, if, um, I think is what, what it says, that, uh, if, um.
Oh, it's a liability, whether they intended it or not?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, I won't. So on B, do we wanna include or process prostitution?
Yes, I put that into the subject to confirmation from.
Sure.
Adjustment that we can do that.
Or should, or should.
Yeah.
I just think the balance is a little bit low. I, I'd double the basic in my recommendation. In A, make it a hundred bucks, in B, two fifty, and C, five hundred. We're serious about this, we should put a fine on there, it's serious. Like the A D E Q, it's ten thousand dollars for dumping garbage in your front yard. That's the fine, ten grand.
I think they were wrong on that, I think it's twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Cause I just read that.
Okay.
No, I agree with Lynn.
And this is the same thing we had in the other one, it says these days is shall be considered a separate offense and should be punished as such, so first day you do it, it's twenty-five hours, the second day it's fifty.
And I suggest it be a hundred for the second day.
And I, I think that there's probably some general, general, um.
Motivation?
Well, I, I think that there's, I think in general, the, the judge has discretion as to whether or not to adjust the fines also.
Anyway, and I thought, you know, we went to that district court that day, they fined for not greeving butter.
Well, depends on how many things you did wrong. That one poor girl, she opened container, driving with a suspended license.
Well, I know, but it.
No proof of insurance, she was up to twenty-five hundred bucks before she battered her eyes three times, so.
And under B, are you gonna put chapter five oh nine?
So.
Instead of any of the several provisions?
Yeah.
Not me.
Somebody just, uh, librarian, plays, plays tunes. All right.
Under C, citations implies our code enforcement officer would need a citation book?
Yeah.
Our, but our lady, it depends on if they're issuing the citations or the deputy. Would the deputy use his own citation book or a city?
I asked.
City statute citation?
Well, whatever the rules of criminal prosecution.
They, they, um, it's actually written on a state citation, according to Bobby Ray, like, at length, and he's the code enforcement officer in Ruby Springs. And he is a sworn officer, 'cause he's also a part-time policeman, but, uh, he says that code enforcement violations like this is the actual citations are written on a state citation. So I, I need to find out more about that.
I assume a citation book is prenumbered and you kinda have to account for each citation, there's copies that are part of the citation book that they get filed somehow.
I don't know, but, um, whenever we find, identify who our code enforcement officer is.
We'll figure it out.
I'm going to recommend that that person's job shadow, either Bobby Ray or, or, um, the guy Kim something or other in Berryville, um, they've been very, very cooperative or so far. But that's just way to learn, is just follow along with somebody and watch what they do. Deals, nothing on that?
Oh, yeah, I had a question on a deal, it's kinda strutting, strange for I read it the way this was worded. If you plead guilty, can, can you go then and appeal? Your plea of guilty? It's made no sense, they have no contest, same thing, yeah. That's, that's strutting, it's very strange.
Or after.
If you plead guilty to a crime, you don't get to appeal it, do you?
Well, can you, where are you, you're guilty, please?
Appeal it, no contest either.
Probably, I don't know.
That's not to keep you from.
All that adjustment.
Yeah.
I mean, that's lawyer stuff. I don't, I'm not gonna, you know, my shit.
I know, like I said, somebody else's, some Conway lawyer wrote that, so.
Five oh nine oh five, paragraph A, next to the last line, starts with business licenses, sign permits, building permits, I inserted construction in front of electrical. Put out and, put another slash in front of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
I did that, yeah.
Okay. Section B, bullet four, insert the city in front of the state.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's city means that.
Yeah, I put city slash state.
All right, under C. Anthony, proceed, moving on to D. It just basically says within the law, it means permits and licenses, there's violations. Moving on to five oh nine oh six. Under, under A, Lynn, inserted, uh, date, time of violation observed, date, time notice of violation is documented. Date, time notice of violation is posted on property, date, time notice of violation is sent to property owner and method of service. And attached photographs and video evidence.
I just think that's important for documenting the event, and then setting the times, because their times start when certain things happen.
Right. And under item four, again, questioning court costs from the cost of prosecution. Anything for B? C, under transfer ownership. It just says that you can't sell your house because somebody, uh, because a big violation of us, uh, uncovered. D, exceptions? Okay, five oh nine oh seven, condemnation. Hopefully, it'll never come to that.
Yeah.
It will.
It will, I mean, the district, yeah, the district has had to destroy property structures before, you know?
No, it's just because they temporarily ended up with ownership of them. They didn't have to go through a condemnation process.
That's true.
Um, this does happen, it's a very, very long, drawn-out ordeal. And usually, it, uh, won't happen unless the city has the money to deal with it once it's condemned. There was something on the Springfield News about that this morning, how many, you know, um, condemnable properties they have in Springfield that are just sitting there with no action being taken.
The longer you wait.
The worse it gets.
The worse it gets, and I mean, we had that in Oklahoma, we ended up three hundred land houses. Just had to, I mean, we started budgeting for fifty a year, it, it fell.
I, I know there was an instance, this was years ago, um, but there was an instance where there was a trailer in, what, unit one? And the neighbors had reported that there were needles and everything on the grounds of the property and and the trailer was light up and not being used, they, and there were children playing around the trailer and in the lot.
You get that, you get homeless people that squander.
Right, I mean, that adds a clear situation where you wanna present it, you remember that.
All right, under, uh, paragraph G, um, Lynn brought up that, uh, we want, I, I need to update this to reflect our actual notification or publica- notification of.
How we notify the public?
How we notify the public, thank you. So I'll update that section. Then under H, again, the cost of prosecution, I, same thing, J, same thing, K. Lynn raised the question, should we include that the court shall order that court costs and court and cost of prosecution be ordered to the same?
Yeah, that's the first time I put it in, and I went back and shortened it to the cost of prosecution.
Yeah, because the court costs, you're not gonna get.
Right.
That goes to the judge and to cover the clerk's costs and stuff.
But it's the same thing, not the, the court cost and cost of prosecution.
Okay. Anything on five oh nine oh eight? Oh nine?
This is where I inserted the definition, oh, under bathroom. Uh, a room containing plumbing pictures including a bathtub or shower, what about the toilet and sink, Noah? Um, is that different than a, a shower?
Yes, that's, that's a toilet.
Toilet room?
By definition.
Yeah, and that was in the.
Toilet room is? Probably didn't. Toilet room, water closet, urinal both, but not a bathtub or shower, okay, it's fine then.
I'm sure these definitions are.
Again, I just cut and paste through that.
Somebody spent some time on that.
In code enforcement officer definition, I capitalize city. Any city, forty?
You capitalize your city, I think.
Yeah, cities capitalize in most, in every occurrence except.
That's, that's, yeah.
They're trying to correct where we wanna.
Yeah. It implies these city, not a generics at A.
At the bottom of page fourteen, public way. I know that the city has no such streets.
But they may.
They may, but any street alley or similar parcel of land essentially unobstructed from the ground to the sky. Which is deeded, dedicated, or otherwise permanently.
Parcel or land essentially unobstructed from the ground to the sky, which is, do you mean that it's dedicated or otherwise permanent?
Or.
Appropriate for public use?
I think so.
What, what's your problem with that?
We don't have any such streets, that are deeded, dedicated, or otherwise permanently appropriated for public use, we don't have any streets. The city does it.
Not yet.
Okay.
But we will, by the time pop drive is paved.
Okay. All right. What I didn't wanna do is open that big can of worms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
You know, a lot more than what you want.
Yeah, I.
Okay, that's fine.
I wonder if the fact that it doesn't say otherwise appropriated by the city for public use. I mean, we have streets out here that aren't appropriated by somebody for public use, that are within our boundary. So would they, how they gonna play with this? Yeah, it needs one or two.
Or is it just?
Public way, fine. Public way.
I, I guess we could change that, instead of for public use, we could say, uh, permanently appropriated by the city. That way, if, when, you know, if we pass an ordinance accepting something as a public way, then, then it's by definition.
Because it's used in five oh eight, it's used in five oh nine dot eight, under closing streets.
Oh.
Five oh nine dot eight.
Well, we'd wanna be able to close streets owned by hindsight, if there were issues.
Yeah, I don't think that is.
You know, you're talking about an emergency, a lot or a structure, that you're trying to get under control somehow.
Well, the district's in trouble, isn't it? Where does the term public way use?
I found the first in five oh nine dot oh eight, under closing streets, under B. Five oh nine eight twelve. Five oh nine oh eight, B. Good B.
Says, public ways adjacent to unsafe structures and prohibit the same something utilized.
Yeah, I mean, in practical terms here, if, if there's a problem, the code enforcement officer is gonna get with, you know, the fire chief and, and Kenny Gart, and put barricades up to close the street, so. I don't, I don't really see where, I will change before public use to appropriated by the city. Yeah, I don't know, I gotta go back and.
Actually, um, what, where this is worded is it could be either dedicated or otherwise permanently appropriated by anybody.
Yeah, that's, that's why it's worded now.
It seems like you'd want that, because a lot of streets out here are kind of the, under the public use of this. Or the city would still want to maintain the safety of the property along that public way. So, I'd say no, change, put it open for.
I, I, I think I'm gonna just leave it for public use, because I don't think that opens up any cans of worms.
Okay.
We, you know, we have an understanding that, that, um, the the streets that the district retains responsibility for are licensed for public use or whatever, so. In practical terms, it won't be a problem, I'm pretty sure.
On page fifteen, rubbish, the last line, dust, another similar insert trash materials?
Yeah, I, I put that in there.
Then, on fifteen is where inserted the definition for trash.
Yep.
Okay.
Got that.
You're all.
No, uncut weeds and grass is another one that's going to be a can of worms, because there's you know, are we going to include the, um, the twenty-five hundred unimproved lots on Holiday Island? As, as being required that they, uh, cut the grass?
Five oh nine eleven says it's only the lots that join the dog lots.
Is that what I, so I've, I've already tried to deal with that.
Yes, I think somewhere it's in here.
I know, that's, that's up five oh nine eleven.
You can look on getting those outstate property owners to do that.
Can I, in, are we jumping over that section now?
Um.
Let's not, let's just make sure we got a legal first, we're going with descriptions. Five oh nine ten?
Yeah.
Okay, about.
Going down to D one. Um, yeah, where'd that come from, that looks like it.
But here's, here's a, here's an interesting thing with five oh nine ten B, responsibility. When you think of the, uh, situation of the street, um, a person shall not permit another person to occupy premises which are not in a sanitary and safe condition. So it sounds like the owner of a property can, should prevent a tenant from occupying.
Yeah, it's an elementary.
Now, I wonder if that means if the tenant caused the unsanitary condition, if they still have the responsibility to prevent.
Where, where are you?
I'm on B, five oh nine ten B.
B, okay.
Just under the definitions. It's the second sentence.
That's what it says, it says the owner is responsible for making sure the tenant keeps it clean, or he can kick him off.
Except that he can't. Except that he can't.
I, I, I don't have a problem with that. If the code enforcement officer says that this property is not habitable.
Then you can't rent it.
Then the people have to move, have to move, the landlord needs to deal with it. I don't think, you know, evicting somebody is difficult, but I don't think removing somebody from an unsafe or unsanitary si- condition is difficult.
I hope so.
I mean, we talked about that.
That might be, that might make the difference in the situation, yeah. The fact that they named the property, you know, the habit.
Right. Right.
Okay, well, there's some of them that I don't.
Okay, where are we at, how far did we get here?
Five oh nine eleven?
I'm not sure.
Um, I'm on, I'm still on five ten D. Um, one, Lynn inserted along a common street front.
That's five oh one.
That's five oh one, yeah. Oh, never mind, five eleven, three, I'm all the way down to five eleven D.
What, what's that thing about ALU dumping, that doesn't have anything to do with very, very big channel. And we've covered that in numerous places before.
Uh, depending on where you dump, it could be drainage.
I know, we had some place before.
B?
B is.
B one?
Anyway. In five oh, and, and dot eleven D, grass and weeds, defining a property as undeveloped that's adjacent to a developed property. I inserted along a common street front, so it didn't deal with a guy with a lot behind me.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I, and I put that in there.
Okay.
And then you also wanted to add, uh, joined by.
I just asked some questions, but joined by a common rear parking, what about those lots? What about adjacent, owned by?
I don't know, there's no way in hell you're gonna enforce that.
You enforce it with fines and citations.
You got all kinds of vacant lots down here in E U, I don't know, how am I gonna get somebody going and?
Are they adjacent to a developed property?
Sure.
Well, then, with the ordinance in place, the, the owner with the improvement says, the guy next to me is not taking care of the lot, we inspect it and we find him.
But you're only gonna do a fifteen foot swath.
Right, that's what I thought, it's not very much.
It's like, almost ridiculous.
That's probably the width of the easement.
Yeah, the, the maximum side.
If you don't, if you don't.
No.
If you don't.
The minimum is five feet.
So you got a fifteen foot bump, you gotta go down and clear that fifteen foot on each side of your lot.
That, 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 we need to stop, I mean, this whole paragraph is probably null and void.
Okay.
Because the property owners don't own any of the street front. All of the property lines are well back from the street, so if we're, if we're wanting people to, if, as, as written here, the the person would have to find wherever their lot line is, and then move fifteen feet back from that. But there would still be tall grass between their lot line and the street. And that's.
Possible, sure.
I was thinking more along the side borders of a lot, which is called adjacent property.
It shouldn't, it says all of them, it doesn't define it, it says fifteen foot bumper all there.
This is not talking about the street front of the noncompliant property, talking about it being adjacent to developed property and mowing along the sideline. Side property, that reaction. To me, fifteen feet won't make a difference in their property.
So remember you got this conduit which, you know, not medicated, it's not a proper.
You don't have a, a whole lot of
And some.
Non-resident owners either. It ain't going to happen, guys.
This section here, this, this section D, a lot of this is mine, because I was trying to come up with a way of dealing with people mowing, you know, con, uh, con, keeping the weeds down on, on their lot, but not, without requiring everybody that owns a lot, you know, like me, I have two lots on Holiday Island Drive, you know? That, there's no health or sanitation issue with the grass growing up on my lots. So I, I don't want to make everybody that's got a lot out in the woods, you know, mow the grass in their lot. But I do want to be able to get some control over the developed areas.
Yeah, so you drive along Lakeside and on the west end of it, there's a lot in the middle of it, almost a golf lots, and the grass is four feet high. The fifteen feet of least is the buffer for those weeds in control of penetrating into the, to the lot. And that's what the fifteen feet's for. It helps, it helps, it doesn't prevent at all, but still, you're like said, you have fifteen feet up left and fifteen feet on the right, in the middle it's four feet tall.
Yeah.
I guess.
It's totally surrounded by developed.
If I was on the adjacent lot, I would just make a deal with the owner of the other lot to mow that fifteen foot bumper for him.
You could do that.
The part about that situation which I would be in is that the, the lot that I bought next to my developed property is, there's not grass, there's like, or a big oak tree.
It's trees, trees and cedars.
Trees and branches.
This is talking about grass and weeds, not about cedars and trees.
You got small.
Mow around those trees. Did I have to mow around?
You did, like, drove all around them.
Yeah, if there was grass growing, but.
And there's a lot for sale over on Table Lot, did I have to do that?
Yeah, I got one too, I.
I'm still hung up on the fact though that, that the district actually owns the land, but you know, in most cases, um, well, you know, probably a good fifteen, twenty feet back from the edge of the road.
What do they do against it? They don't make them.
So we're going to have to involve the district in a discussion about what we're going to require for vegetation control.
Solar control.
It, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's kind of been a little bit of a pet theme of mine for a long time with the district, even when I was on the board, that we spend so much, um, so many, expend so many resources um, mowing all of Holiday Island Drive, all of the rural part of Holiday Island Drive is manicured. You know, mowing multiple times a, a summer with a riding lawnmower. But then, you know, other parts in Holiday Island, you know, never get the ditches cut at all. And you go up, you know, to the really populated area and unless the neighbors mow the vacant lot next door to them, you know, they, they, they don't, you know, the district doesn't do anything with them. So what makes Holiday Island Drive so special that it gets manicured and everything else gets ignored?
Well, because just about everybody that comes in or out of the Holiday Island, comes down to Holiday Island Drive, that's your first impression of the city.
Yeah, but they, they drive past several lots with grass growing up, they drive right up to the road.
But very few people drive past, you know, off the loose of driving.
And that, that's the, that's the rationale that's always been offered by the district is that it's, you know, it's where all, it's, it's where everybody drives that comes into Holiday Island, they want to look nice.
They do the same thing with Woodsdale, so.
Yeah, I think you have to realize the limitations on your resources and.
For purposes of our, of our.
Grass and weed ordinance.
In grass and weeds ordinance, we are going to have to consider though the fact that the district owns a lot of the land that we're talking about. And, um, I don't want to pass an ordinance that they can't deal with.
I have a problem with D two, one of excludes the suburban group of district from having to maintain those areas when we've got a situation with bamboo on the corner up to the asphalt on the road, can't see around the corner. And when we had a fire in our driveway and in our garage, the fire truck drove to the other end of Bambi Drive because they couldn't see down our street.
Wow.
So we do have in our ordinance a sightline for corners that we can deal with the bamboo problem on that.
And it's, I think, from the position of the water meters, I'd say almost all of this is on district property. Because I assume water meters are on district property.
They're right on the property line.
And they're on the inside of the bamboo.
That bamboo problem corner could be covered with our sightline problem, our corner sightline. Extra address, so, and bamboo.
We're, we're not going to be able to hammer this out before next week's city council meeting because of the fact that I, I need to get, um, the district involved in this.
Yeah.
So I'm just going to, you know, put section D as being reserved for now and we'll get back into it. Now, it's, after lunch, do we want to keep going or do we want to, um, take a break and, and you can, uh, people can feed me any questions they have or comments or updates to the rest of this, I can mark up a draft with the suggested changes in yellow or red and send it back to everybody and still maybe try to knock out a, a some, you know, at least a portion of this that we can pass next week.
That, 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 well, that's what, the way Lynn did the, uh.
Zone.
What are we?
Zone rigs.
Yeah, zoning, that worked well, highlighting changes and.
Yeah, I, the format I used was whatever I added is in yellow highlight and then my red is my concern.
If, if everybody, if I, if I sent this version to everybody, and I think I did, I, I highlighted the changes in yellow too.
Okay.
Did you get that?
I didn't get one.
I didn't get any.
I don't think you sent one copy to people. I didn't get a copy, you know?
I don't, I think I did.
I don't think it got posted on the website.
No, it's definitely not on the website.
If you, if none of you have anything yet highlighted in yellow, then, then you don't have the copy with Lynn's edits. But send me your edits and your, or your questions and I will add them in and highlight them in yellow and redistribute it to everybody.
So are we going to schedule a follow-up workshop or something?
We're going to mix two now?
No. We're going to do it at the regular meeting, right?
But if he doesn't get it hammered out with the, uh, with the orders, it's got to be posted by Friday. Right?
Right.
Or are you just posting ordinance up to the point where we stop? You just do an ordinance with that stuff that we've covered.
Then what, add the other by amendment that night?
Or with a different ordinance?
I think, anything.
We can add to the, the codes with new ordinances, just in.
Okay, so just to dock as.
Yeah, through five oh eight or something and then, you know, beyond that can be another ordinance of later date.
That's what I'm doing with the building code, adding a whole bunch of it.
Yeah, I do it. That makes sense.
Okay.
And we, you know, we'll prioritize for next week's meeting, we'll prioritize the parts that cover the, the imminent persistent problems with, you know, with property and do some of these that are lesser issues like vegetation control, maybe do another workshop and another ordinance.
You can also schedule a special meeting after the regular meeting to approve something.
Yeah. All right, so we're leaving off on Roden, stopping point is Roden Arbidge. All right, motion to adjourn the workshop.
Summon. Second.
We have a motion on the second, uh, Jerry made the motion, Lynn seconded it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.